So, welcome and thank you for participating in our process. We have five full members of the Select Board here tonight, and we're going to be asking a set of questions, a set of interview questions. So, without further ado, I'll start the first one, which is, tell us about your firm and the depth of experience of the attorneys who will be representing Broughton. Sure, yeah, you can introduce yourself first. I figured I'd be part of telling about their firm. The attorneys, right?
Yes, we're Brooks and Durensis. I brought a number of people here so that you can see that we're a full-service firm. With me is Lenny Kopelman. He's the founder of KP Law and Kopelman Page. He's now of counsel to us. Peter Barry, who's a labor and employment lawyer. Kim Salat, who is a trial lawyer, litigator. And Lou Ross, land use. And pretty much all municipal law issues.
Thank you. I'll repeat that question. Tell us about your firm and the depth of experience of attorneys who will be representing Broughton. You got some of that, but then we could expand.
All right. I think what characterizes this firm as opposed to the other firms you're interviewing is what I would call practicality and partnership. What characterizes us is that we have not only done the town council service. I've been a sitting town council since the 1980s. But I'm also a selectman. I've served eight terms, 22 years currently, a selectman in a community very similar to Broughton. A community that prides itself in its history, prides itself in its rural character, has many of the same issues, I think, that you're facing. Being on both sides of the table means that I'm not going to give you long law review type of responses where you finish reading it and you say, well, what are we supposed to do? I want to solve problems, get them off of your minds, know that we can try and figure out solutions that'll work for the community, that will bring forward progress. We're offering a flat rate so that you don't have to worry about the economics. And because of that, we encourage the partnership part of our proposal. That is, as a selectman myself, I'm one of you. I'm used to sitting on your side of the table and my side of the table. I know the issues that you face. You can contact us any time of the day or night, run ideas past us. We can try to figure out ways to solve your problems in a practical way. We know you don't want to be the test case. You don't want to be the experiment or the guinea pig. We'll try to figure out ways that have worked in the past. So, in addition to being an eight-term selectman, I'm also, at one point was president of the Massachusetts Selectmen's Association, and now the first vice president of that organization. For the last nine years, I've been on the Mass Municipal Association Board of Directors. So, I participate in the process of legislation that's going on. Our offices are in Boston, four blocks away from the State House. So, I'm kind of the guy that easily can run down to the State House and get things done. I serve on the local government advisory committee, originally appointed by Deval Patrick, and since I've been appointed by Charlie Baker. Because of all of that, we're very hands-on and we're very practical. Turn it over to Lenny if you want to add anything to that.
No, just a couple matters. A few years back, the U.S. government hired me to do the Fort Devens reuse plan, which I did. And I've represented many of the towns that are very close by. So, I'm fully familiar with this area. One of the things that I think is very helpful regardless which way you go, whether you're paying us per hour or you're paying us a flat fee, is that I have found that selectmen, that, I actually didn't really understand it until a selectman from one of our biggest communities was retiring this past year. And I saw him at the MMA Annual Meeting. And he said, "I'm really going to miss talking to you because what I could do is call you anytime." He told me I could, and I actually would call you. And we've worked through what I want to get. Because I remember you said that if I ask you if you can do this, yes or no, you want to know if the answer is yes, what is it though you're really trying to accomplish because there may be a better way of doing it? So, I just don't want to give a yes. And I didn't want you to watch the clock because I wanted you to have a relationship that we can get to know each other, what's the feeling of the public, how are you going to deal with it, what do your colleagues think? And I provide that service, and it's at no charge either direction. I would like very much, what I enjoy doing is helping people to govern. And the other thing I want to say is that what differentiates this firm and the reason I chose it, I was the head of my firm, and of course, once in a while, you get a question and say, "I wonder what's the right thing here? I'm a little, I'd like to get somebody else's opinion." And I would call Paul. He was a master in this field. And we'd discuss it, and I would get benefit of his thinking. And I thought he did a really great job, and I started to get to know him better and realized that what he did is he put together a firm that didn't have any associates, that had all trained people. And that was of great value because you don't have these learning experiences, these issues coming up, and somebody reviewing the work and getting it later than what you'd want, but someone could actually get it out and doesn't have to have it reviewed. And so, I asked Paul, I said, "Paul, what happens if somebody leaves?" He said, "No problem at all because we are sought after. We could put an ad out in the Mass Lawyers Weekly. We will get seven to 10 people who are knowledgeable in that field. We don't want someone with two to five years' experience. We want experienced lawyers." And so, I think what you get is a close-knit, smaller firm rather than someone that's trying to represent the whole world. And to be honest with you, we started losing control when you get to 125, 130 clients. And then what, problematically, we did a lot of special counsel work. And my thing that I liked is we're not after quote-unquote "special counsel work" because they pay more and they get more attention in some respects. And so, my sense is, I want someone that's just doing town council work, period, not representing Enterprise Automobile Company, which is the largest rent-a-car in the world, which they do, and maritime ships getting into accidents. So, I found a firm that does that, and I'm very happy with them, and I'm glad to be part of it.
Can I ask some of my colleagues to speak a little bit about what, or?
Sure, yeah. Another couple minutes, how about that? And then I'll sort of move on. Lou?
You can use that mic, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity this evening to demonstrate why Brooks and Durensis is a legal team for your community. First, I'll back up and introduce myself. My name is Lou Ross. I'm a municipal attorney with background in real estate and land use law. I'm a primary backup of Paul, Durensis, and Lenny Kopelman. Frequently, you'll get me, if not Paul or Lenny, and I'm always available. Essentially, I can help you with all the day-to-day questions that come up, you know, whether it's public records law, open meeting law, questions about your streets, your electric department, questions about your, all the conservation and open space that you have, or conservation issues. Those types of questions usually come to me, and I can usually answer those without having to perform research. And I can, based on my 20 years of experience doing this, I can give you a real, practical solution for what you're trying to accomplish. And that's my approach, is that real, practical solutions that make sense. And I, like Paul, and like Peter, and others of our firm, involved and dedicated public servant in my community, I've been on the Finance Committee, my second term there. So, I understand what you're looking at and faced with on a daily, annual basis, especially during budget season. So, I'm here to try to help you with good, practical advice, keep you out of trouble, and make sure you are not dragged into court. And when you are dragged into court, that's when we turn it over to Mrs. Salat. I'll turn it to Salat here. I'd like to introduce her.
So, I have a quote from the voice I hardly even need to use in my microphone. But I'm Kim. I'm a litigator. I've got over 33 years of experience. You don't mind if I speak, do you? 33 years of experience as a trial lawyer. I represent all kinds of municipal boards. I do 48 work. I do 40B work. I do Chapter 41 work. I do Chapter 79 eminent domain takings and other regulatory takings. I do 258 work. I do civil rights work. I've been at it for over 33 years, and I have a great winning record. But I'm also getting a little wiser as I get older. I think that's part of the goal. And I recognize now the importance of alternative dispute resolution. And when there is a will to compromise, to settle, to have a meeting of the minds, I recognize the value of that as well. Although, I love to litigate, and I'm really great at it. I would like to have the opportunity to represent you folks as well. And I hope that you choose Brooks Durensis because I think you'll make the right choice, and I'd like to foster a relationship with you folks. Normally, I have a lot more to say, but I'll hand it over.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you and good evening.
It's on.
It's on.
My name is Peter Barry. My expertise is in labor and employment law. Just to give you a little sense of my background, for the first part of my career, I worked for in-house counsel, as in-house counsel for large public authorities, up to 1,200 employees, did all the labor and employment work for those authorities, including collective bargaining with a whole range of different kinds of entities, trades, licensed trades, unlicensed trades, laborers, police, blue-collar employees, white-collar employees, management employees, as well as all the employment work, which became more prominent over the years, including disability accommodation issues, discrimination issues, Fair Labor Standards Act issues, which tend to come up quite a bit in the public sector. And once I moved to the private sector, I've been the co-chair of the labor and employment group at the firm. And we've both been, done the labor work for Paul's municipal clients where he is town council for all issues, as well as a special labor council to other cities and towns and public entities. So, I have a lot of experience with the JLMC, for instance, dealing with public safety issues and resolving public safety contracts through the JLMC process in the '90s when Deval Patrick was first elected. He had an interest in reforming the labor, public sector labor relations law, making it more efficient, more responsive to both labor and management. So, I worked with a group putting together amendments to the statute, completely reorganizing the agency. That passed. The governor appointed me to be a member of the initial advisory council to the Commonwealth Employment Relations Board. We were charged with hiring, or making recommendations for appointments to the governor for the chair of the Employment Relations Commission. That person is still there 18 years later, so that worked out. So, that's a little bit of my legal experience on the private side. I am a Marine Corps combat veteran. I live in Acton. I've been there for 30 years. I first took a seat, vacant seat, on the Housing Authority when I first moved there. Moved on to the Community Housing Corporation, deals with 40Bs, Lip Programs, Zoning Board of Appeals, Conservation Commission, first chair of the Community Preservation Committee in Acton in 2002. We jumped on very early. I'm in my third term as a selectman in Acton. I just hired a new town manager after 10 years of the prior town manager. So, you know, local government is kind of part of my DNA. I do it because I like it, and I'm interested in it, and I have a lot of experience in it, and I look forward to working with you folks. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have the next question. We assume that there will be kind of one attorney appointed as our town council, assuming that that's correct in how it's structured. How will that attorney interact with the other attorneys at the firm, and how will back-up town council be designated?
So, I would need to leave council. And as I say, I want to get to know all of you and establish a partnership with you. But what I'd like is to have all requests come to me. And if it's a labor and employment matter, for example, I would involve Peter in it. Or if it's a litigation matter, I would try and get Kim involved in that. But I want to emphasize that if you feel like you want to talk to Lenny, you just call Lenny, get the benefit of his experience, or call Lou. We're all available. But the central person to talk to, who keeps track of what's going on, and makes sure that you're not asking a question that conflicts with a question that a different member is asking, is me. I want to be sure that the board is getting answers that are useful to the board, not to undercut. We don't want one member of the board trying to use us to undercut another member of the board. That's my job to make sure that doesn't happen.
Thank you.
How does your firm keep current on the ever-changing mass general laws related to municipalities, i.e. municipal finance, procurement, labor, marijuana, et cetera?
So, I'm on the MMA Board of Directors. I'm actually on the Executive Committee of the MMA. And we are constantly interfacing with members of the General Court and with the administration. So, to use an analogy, it's like when pizza's being made, I'm in there with my sleeves rolled up, putting the dough and the tomato sauce and the cheese. I'm part of the process. So, I pretty much, well, my role is to represent all 351 cities and towns, and to make sure that legislation that's being worked on is good for the cities and towns, all cities and towns. There are a lot of things that surface in the legislative process that are not good for cities and towns. And so, we try to steer away from the things that we don't think are useful to cities and towns, and try to support and encourage passage of things that are useful to cities and towns. So, I pretty much know what's going on.
I'd like to add that when I see something that should, in my opinion, be changed...
So, the folks of whom hear you as well as we do?
When I believe things should be changed, I will get together with various committees at the MMA and with the Mass Municipal Association Executive Director, and try to get it changed. I have changed a lot. For instance, I did not want to sit at town meetings where they were counting the two-thirds vote, when it was very clear there was a two-thirds vote. So, as you know, the moderator, under the new statute, is about seven, eight, 10 years old now, can declare it a two-thirds vote. And I've done a lot of that sort of stuff. And I get called by various commissions, like the State Ethics Commission, to testify on behalf of the changes they want. And to the extent that it's consistent with what I think the boards want, I will do so. If it isn't consistent, I don't. So, we do quite a bit of that.
Just let me make a brief comment also in response to that question. I think we all stay involved in educational updates, certainly the Bar Association. I chaired the Labor and Employment Section of Mass Bar for a number of years. So, we keep involved, certainly, in the educational programs that go on. I also chaired a yearly seminar at Harvard that's been going on for 35 years now on public sector collective bargaining. We brought in all the agency heads, had seminars on any changes in the law. But also, as a selectman, I mean, I'm aware, when the statute came down about allowing cities and towns to bargain changes in health insurance through a public employee committee, I certainly bargained with several towns and made some changes in health insurance that saved money. But I'm also on Health Insurance Trust in Acton, and I deal day-to-day with, or, you know, monthly with the health insurance issues. And we are bargaining, we bargained health savings accounts, high deductible plans, got the employees to buy into it, so, and are saving the town a lot of money. So, from, as Paul says, from both sides of the table, we're, we keep up to date. Thank you.
So, you've just answered how you keep your folks within your firm up to date. And the question that I'm going to ask you is a three-part question. And basically, we'll be asking you how you keep us up to date on the change in laws. So, how will your firm work to keep department heads and members of the Select Board aware of changing laws? And the first part is, A, what types of training do you currently provide to your clients?
It doesn't matter. I'll take that. For training, we offer all types of training. If it's with our flat retainer, it's at no charge. We offer training on open meeting law, public records law, conflict of interest law. Peter runs trainings on labor and employment issues. And we'll come, spend an hour or two with you at Town Hall to give a presentation for, you know, with the slides and presentation and question and answer period, that all your questions hopefully can be answered. And we do that routinely, and we're comfortable doing that, and we'd be happy to do that for you as well.
Great. And the B part of the question is, do you publish a newsletter and/or an e-newsletter? And if so, in what frequency?
You should answer that. We do publish newsletters. Here's the editor of the newsletter.
We publish newsletters, you know, formal newsletters, probably twice a year formally. We issue more brief news alerts more frequently than that as things are changing. For example, the Municipal Modernization Act, a couple of years ago, we did a big newsletter on that. We issue alerts on labor and employment issues. We issue alerts on the recreational marijuana statute that, you know, every community in the state's dealing with now for the first time. So, you know, as things come up, as we see that all our communities are dealing with the same problems, we issue a news alert to try to keep them ahead of the curve.
Very good. And the third part would be, do you hold regular office hours within the communities which you serve? And if so, at what frequency?
Well, I'll answer that. Some communities want to have office hours, other communities don't. I have regular office hours with the town in Canton. It's every week. I go there every Tuesday. I stay the afternoon to deal with department heads. They meet Tuesday night. So, after I finish with the department heads, the various selectmen come in, chat with me about things that are on the agenda. And if there's an issue that I see where counsel would be useful at the meeting itself, we'd work it out. So, I would be present at the meeting to guide them through what might be a difficult section. Happy to do that for Broughton if you want to have that service. Happy to do it.
Thank you.
So, I have the next question, but I'm actually going to follow up a little bit on what you just said. If you're, it sounds like it's a drop-in session, and you said, "Selectmen can come in and chit-chat with you." Does it have to be just one select person at a time, or is there an open meeting law violation possible in that scenario?
Let me answer that three ways. First of all, selectmen don't wait for office hours. When they have a thought, they call me. They call me day, night. I'm happy to take the phone calls. I get phone calls on Saturdays. I get phone calls on Sundays. You don't need to wait for me to be at office hours for you to have a question. I want to encourage selectmen to have questions. When selectmen are getting ready for a meeting, I will usually be in an office outside. They will stop by one by one with different things, questions about the agenda, you know, is it legal for us to do this?
Right.
Can I make a motion? What would be the wording of the motion? That kind of stuff.
I guess my question is pretty specific. I'm, as a Select Board member, wondering, if it so happened that three of us dropped in on you at the same time to hear the answer to a question that one person posed, would that be legal?
As long as they don't deliberate amongst themselves and they're just listening to me.
I see.
But I don't encourage that.
Uh-huh.
But yes, has it happened? Yeah, particularly at the doorway to the meeting. We run our way in.
Right.
And there'll be a cluster of selectmen, and someone will turn to me. Everybody else listens to the answer, but they're only listening to the answer.
Okay. So, actually, that was a side, a sideline I took us on. My official question is, does your firm ever offer general seminars, information on best practices, articles, et cetera, to officials in communities that you serve? Sounds a little bit like duplicating the questions you just asked. I don't know how we did this.
Yes, but to sort of further answer that, I know that Peter Barry just issued two alerts, one on pregnancy and one on the Equal Pay Act.
Right, which are newly implemented.
So, what we will do is send out emails to all of you, primarily to the town manager and to you, and to maybe some department heads that are dealing with employee issues, your HR director, who will describe, you know, new statute, here's how it works, what are the implications, and so on. So, that's an add-on to what we've already said. We do have the newsletters. We do tell you about things when an issue comes up. If you have an issue that you're dealing with on the board, and you're trying to figure out how to deal with it, or the warrant for the town, many times draft warrants will come in, and I can see, you no longer need to do this, like the putting two-thirds vote to put money into stabilization. So, if the law got changed, it used to be two-thirds to put money into stabilization. Now, it's a majority vote. So, if I see a warrant that we're putting money into stabilization, I will make sure that you know that's a majority vote. You don't need a two-thirds vote. So, it's a continuing process. It's not a, it's not a one-time thing, and it's not, it's an interactive process.
Thank you.
But it's still two-thirds out.
Still two-thirds out, yes. You're right.
So, I think this also might have been answered, so hopefully it'll be quick. Do you typically attend meetings of the Select Board in the communities that you serve?
Yes.
There we go.
Regularly?
No, not regularly. As requested.
Okay.
Or if I am looking at the agenda and I see an issue, I'll call and see if they need assistance. So, I won't here.
Excellent.
Please describe a situation where you have been asked to provide legal advice on a unique ethics case or a grievance involving a public employee.
Unique advice?
Just a specific ethics case or a grievance, you know, kind of how did you handle that? What was?
Well, grievance is a labor and employment issue. Perhaps I'll future answer that, but in terms of ethics, we're constantly being asked questions about ethics. And there have been circumstances where a selectman declined to follow the advice, said, "Let sleeping dogs lie." And then a year later, that selectman got cited by the State Ethics Commission, got one of the largest fines ever imposed. So... So we can't, we can't guarantee that select board members are going to follow the advice, but what we can say is that we are well familiar with what you should be doing. And we're happy to tell all of you what you should be doing, but at the end of the day, it's up to you.
Thank you.
This is focused here at this next one on, really at collective bargaining. And the question is, please discuss your approach in advising the town manager and select board with collective bargaining.
Well, you know, my approach to collective bargaining generally is you have to recognize that your employees are your greatest assets in town. They're the ones that get the services delivered to residents that you want in the best way, most efficient manner. They're also the biggest cost to you generally in both the private sector and public sector, anywhere between 70, 80% of your budget probably when you factor in all the benefits. So obviously, a very important issue in town in terms of getting into collective bargaining. You need to know what the surveys are for comparable communities in terms of benefits. MMA publishes studies that show benefits from comparable communities. I work with human services managers to come up with what other towns that are similar size, similar budgets provide to their employees. You need to approach the table with respect. I believe in collaborative bargaining as opposed to the old issue-to-issue where each side puts their issue on the table and debates back and forth, more collaborative, where you focus on interests and try to find solutions to problems that will address your interests. You clearly have to be able to come to reasonable compromise to try to settle disputes. You know, I've been through teacher picketing lines and it's no fun crossing picket lines to come to meetings. And that not necessarily means you have to agree to what the other side says, but I think you need to look for reasonable and creative ways to try to solve issues. So that's kind of my general approach to collective bargaining. Same way with the question that goes to grievances in the labor field. There are two kinds really. One is under the labor union contract. Again, I think it makes some sense to try to find reasonable compromises to settle issues. I can't always do that. I've been through lots of arbitrations, but even though you can butt heads at the arbitration table, you want to maintain the respect of, you know, the employees. And I think that's important to do and it's something you need to think hard about in dealing with employees. The other kind of grievances you get are a lot these days, reasonable accommodations for disabilities. Again, I approach that with an employee, we're trying to provide you with whatever reasonable benefits you need to be able to perform the functions of your job. You tell us what you think are the most, what you need to get this job done. If it's reasonable, we'll, as you have to under the law, try to accommodate you with it. If it's not reasonable, again, you have to have legitimate reasons and be able to articulate the reasons behind your decision. I think that's very important at both the collective bargaining table and the situations. You need to be able to articulate reasons. The other side may not agree with it, but at least they can accept it if you give them a legitimate basis for why you're taking your position.
Thank you. Great. The next question has to do with town meeting. So please discuss your experience reviewing and drafting as well, the warrant articles for town meeting. Obviously, you would get a template of the draft warrant articles and how you would work it through to its final wording. And then your approach to responding to legal questions that may occur from residents and/or board members and/or other committees.
At town?
Yes, specifically at town meeting.
Let me try first on this. I think I have the record as the select board member who's attended more, no, as the town council, has attended more town meetings than anyone else in the state. I've attended 1,217 town meetings. I have seen it all. I have, as part of that process, drafted 1,217 town meeting warrants, complete from the greetings to the constable's service at the end. As part of that process, I work closely with the department heads, with the town manager, with the board of selectmen in defining those articles. Most of my towns put aside a couple of hours on a day that they advertise the town head who will be available for citizens to come in and talk to town council about what might be required for an article. So I do that to assist citizens. At town meeting, I see my primary function is to assist the moderator to run an efficient legal meeting. When questions are asked, I answer them from the perspective of how does that help the orderly process of the meeting and how does it help the town moderator in moving the meeting forward? So obviously, the type of answer that is given depends on the nature of the question. But I'm at all times respectful of citizens, very much aware that it's a democracy and that these are voters and that the voters have a right to know information about what they're voting on.
Thank you.
Okay. We have a question about the appellate tax board. Could you please explain your experience or experiences at the appellate tax board, including the results and what type of cases they were, residential, commercial, personal property, whatever?
All right, so we were going to bring Attorney Dan Deutsch here today and he was not able to attend, but he does our appellate tax board work, but I think Lenny could help.
I can, I'll tell you that I've done numerous cases. Usually what happens at the appellate tax board is they put your, all the cases for your specific town on at one time. And we're concerned, there's certainly issues that we look at and like if there was a community with a lot of condos, you just can't give it to one because then they'll all be in the next day and you'll, it'll kill the base. So we've, there are ways of getting, of tightening up. One is to use interrogatories. And if you use interrogatories, a lot of people default. They just don't bother answering it. But what I have done for homes is I've trained the assessors to be able to handle it themselves. I'll be glad to go there. I'm about 10-minute walk from my office to the, where the appellate tax board holds its hearings. And I know all the hearing offices, they call me up because they have to, so many Republicans and so many Democrats. And they will ask me to say nice things to the governor's office about them and I feel very comfortable with them because they do a good job. So I've tried movie theaters, I've tried just about everything imaginable in the appellate tax board work. But I think that on simple homes, you can train the assessors to do it and you can tell, the easiest way to do it, if you want to spend some money if it's a big case, and you can tell if it's a big case because they put it on, there's two dockets. One docket is the informal and the other one's formal. You can't take an appeal from an informal, but you can take an appeal from formal. So if you get on that docket and it's a large matter, then you need to hire a professional assessor, a professional appraiser of what the property value is. It's almost like an eminent domain case when you really have to work it. But I will tell you that the, my success rate is very, very high, almost 100%, but that doesn't mean I'm a great ATB lawyer. They tend to go with the town and with the assessors. But if you're having a particular problem, we know how to deal with it.
Thank you.
Okay, so hypothetical question this time. Should you become aware of a department head, a member of a board or a member of committee that they are about to do something that'll advise and against the advice of council, what action do you take?
It depends on the nature of what they're planning to do. If they're proposing to commit a crime, then I will bring it to the attention of the appointing authority, that they have been advised of the nature of the legal requirements and they have chosen to disregard that. So I would make sure that you all who probably are the appointing authority know that someone is about to do something that is wrong. If it's a judgment call, and it's not for me to agree or disagree with the judgment calls because you all are the elected officials of the town and they're your appointees. And if they decide it's okay to, you know, permit a particular use, it may not be a use that we think fits into the neighborhood and we can build arguments one way or the other, but it's not our call. So we will defer to those that you've put in charge of making those decisions. And we'll, you know, assist them and have them and build the best case we can for them.
I just add that also, it doesn't pan quite as it is Paul has said, because if somebody comes to me and they wanted a state ethics question answered, if my answer isn't good immediately, even if I'm 100% correct, I have to give it a copy to the clerk, I have to, they have to wait 30 days and then to the State Ethics Commission. But what I do is I would assist somebody to write to the state ethics. I sort of require them to do it just to protect their rear end because it hurts the whole town. And, but if they're, if they continue to do it on their own, then they run a big risk and I'd make sure they understood the risk and I would put it in writing and let them know about it.
Yep. Okay. Shifting gears a little bit, regarding land use and zoning, have you been retained in the past to conduct a comprehensive review of local zoning bylaws to improve clarity and remove contradiction or redundancies? And then have you conducted a similar review of all bylaws and policies for various boards and committees?
Before you answer that, I would just say one thing. If you engage us as your town council, we will automatically review all your bylaws, including your zoning bylaws and every other bylaw. That's part of our process of getting familiar with you. It's kind of like when you go to a new doctor, the new doctor's going to give you a physical exam. So we'll kind of give you a physical exam and if we think that your bylaws need to be updated, we'll tell you that you have obsolete bylaw here, there's a better way to do this and that. We'll give you a report. But go ahead.
He sums it up, but we do that right at the outset usually and, you know, we can do specific reviews of smaller portions of the bylaws. We can do a wholesale review, which is really up to you and we're here to help you.
Thank you.
It's me again. Have you been involved representing municipalities during the court appeal of local zoning requirements? And if you have, and I suspect that's the case, please provide an example.
I litigated, oh, I litigated all facets of land use. I do it in land court, I do it in district court, I do it in superior court, I've done it in the appeals court, one disgruntled, usually plaintiff appealing, judgment entered on behalf of the board in the trial court. My case file list is almost 100 pages long. I could pick anyone you want, John.
An interesting one.
An interesting one. Well, you know, I'll tell you an interesting one that just happened today. It had very little to do with the court, actually. What it had to do with was there were a proposal for a particular use, a change of use, but it was an allowable use with a construction plan that cozied into the setback a little too cozy. That plan was denied. I talked to the plaintiff's attorney, well, can you reconsider this? No, there's no mechanism in the statute for reconsideration. But may I suggest, there is a way to do this through 4816 with a modified plan. I'm not going to tell you how to modify your plan, but if you look at the conditions, if you look at what the board was concerned with at the hearing, they'll, they guide you. Boy, that plan got modified, was sent back by agreement on remand on July 5th after the public hearing. It was allowed. It's a much better plan. It's a much smaller building. There was no opposition and I'm just waiting for 20 days to pass. Now, it's not a big deal, but it is a big deal to people living around there. It is a big deal to the gentleman who put in the application. And it is a big deal to the board who was able to work it out through the public hearing process at a modified plan to get a much better proposal. So it's a little victories, John, that really add up and benefit the community. And that just happened, well, we worked through the process for a couple of weeks. The hearing happened in the end of June, the decision came out July 5th, and I'm just waiting until July 26th.
That was an excellent example. Thank you.
Thank you.
So the next question you touched on during your opening comments and we're going to ask you to elaborate a little further. So it says, discuss how your firm works to provide efficient yet effective legal representation and manage costs. And do you offer a retainer? And if so, what is included, excluded? What is the hourly rate? How much would the retainer be? I can hit you with all those again if you need me to refresh you.
The retainer's $5,000 a month. It covers pretty much everything except litigation, labor, and real estate.
So in terms of litigation, that's understood. And if I'm correct, your rate for litigation is $200 per hour?
Yes.
And then when you touched on labor, it doesn't cover any aspects of labor as part of the retainer?
Practically speaking, I do a fair amount of handling labor issues with incoming phone calls, resolve them quickly. But things that I can't resolve, then go to the labor and employment people. So there's a, what would you call it, a triage. So when you go to an emergency room, the nurse might do a little triage to figure out what needs to be done. So I'm like the family doctor and I look at an issue, is it a major issue that needs labor counsel or is it something that's pretty straightforward and I know the answer, I can take care of it.
So I'm trying to further the understanding on this. Obviously, if we had some type of litigation involving labor, that would come under the litigation.
Yes.
Aspect. Collective bargaining, where does that fall?
That would be outside collective bargaining.
So that's outside of retainer?
Yes.
But general questions concerning labor law, labor-related issues is where you would triage and that would be within the retainer?
Yes. Like someone called up and said, gee, this employee wants to see her personnel record. Do I have to show her her personnel file? Yes. I mean, that was a two-second phone call, a two-second response. I had to listen to all the circumstances, why she wanted to see her personnel file, all that kind of stuff. But she's entitled to see her personnel file. So I listened to it all and gave the answer. I didn't need to bother Peter, not that I want to take away the joy of answering my question, but there's some things we just take care of.
And the last part of that was you said real estate wasn't included. So if we're talking about putting or working with the planning board and/or preparing a zoning article for town meeting, is that included within the retainer?
It is.
But what is not would be like an ATB case, is that correct?
Well, that's, we consider an ATB case litigation because it's an adversarial hearing. What I'm trying to say by real estate is that if you want to acquire a park and you need a title exam and you need... and you need a title exam, and you need to have a purchase and sale agreement, and then you are, have to do a closing.
Development agreement, easements, evidence of.
What about an RFP for the use of town buildings?
I think RFP would be retainer. Unless I'm mistaken, procurement is generally a retainer.
Just trying to get an understanding, and I think.
Appreciate clarifications, yeah.
All of our board, as well as the town manager, just for an understanding, because we're used to one set of rules under our current council. We just need to understand what the differences are, the small nuances and changes.
I would add that I have a procurement attorney, which I did not bring today. I couldn't bring everybody. But there is a guy who does procurement stuff, and goes through all the RFPs, makes sure that they're proper, they're legal, vets them, okay's them. The same thing with contracts. We'll review contracts, we'll okay the contracts as to form. So that's all part of the retainer. But he's not here today, so I'm answering for him.
I just want to make sure that my fellow board members have any further questions on this.
I do. You had referred earlier to a flat rate. Is that the same as this $5,000 a month retainer?
Yes.
That's what you're talking about? Okay. And was there a, that's a choice to have a flat rate, or that is how you do it? That's a choice we make, or is that, that's how you do it?
That's a choice that you make, if you want to do this all orally. At least one community decided they thought that they would not need counsel, and they would try to do it without the retainer. The advantage to us and to you as a retainer is to encourage this partnership.
The relationships, right.
But I want you to spend as much time as you need with us without worrying about, "Oh, my God, are we being charged? What's the cost?", all that kind of stuff. I want you to, if you have a problem, this is to encourage you to do it, knowing that if there's an opportunity to fix a problem, it's a lot easier on everybody if we fix it immediately than to let it explode into litigation and newspaper headlines and crowds coming to your meeting protesting what you've done. Was that slowed in on house?
Did you?
Let me just add that on the litigation issue, if there's a frivolous suit, I mean, we go after legal fees. And we usually get them, depending on how frivolous it is. And if it's not frivolous, then it's, then we fight it out each phase of the road. So we try to get reimbursed for any legal fees from the other side.
We're running short on time. Do you have a follow-up on that?
Yes.
Please go ahead.
Just really short. Would you be able to give us a document that on one side said, "These are the things that are usually included in the retainer", and on the other side, "These are the examples of the kinds of things that are not included in the retainer"?
Yes.
Because I think that would be really helpful for us.
We do have some, what, a breakdown team on page 19 and 20 of the RFP response decisions. It's good to have the clarifications, and I think that there's a lot of slicing and dicing of particular nuances that would be interesting to support.
I realize we're running short on time.
Very quickly, you know, we serve at your will and pleasure. The last thing we want to do is have you upset, so I can assure you that we'll be right back.
Absolutely.
Can I ask a slightly different question than what is here?
Okay.
Forgive me, I maybe should already know this answer. How many, how large is your firm?
10 lawyers.
10. So it sounds like you're all very, very busy people, and with meetings on the same nights as our meetings in general. Do you, does your firm have time to take us on?
Let me answer it this way. We represent four communities. You would be very important to us. You would be our fifth community. I can see firms that you're looking at that have 125 towns with 43 lawyers. If you do the arithmetic, that's like, 125 into 43, it's like one-third of a lawyer per town. If you divide the R10 into 4, R4 into 10, you get 2 and 1/2 lawyers per town. So our style is a little different than the big firm. We feel, I don't want to emphasize, we feel like we're partners with you in what you're trying to do. You're not just a name to us. We get to know all of you. We try to be as supportive as we can to let you accomplish what you want to accomplish. And we work very hard at that.
Good, thank you.
Okay, there's two questions here, and I'll ask the last one first, and then maybe we go back to the original question that Ms. Pine was going to ask, if we have time. And I'm going to preface this, and I'll preface this to everybody. We've had some situations where I felt that I wish someone had advised us that we shouldn't do something rather than telling us how we could do something. And I'd like to get your opinion on how you approach when you issue a legal opinion.
Well, I think it's a little bit of both. We will tell you if we, if there's something that you can't do, we'll tell you you can't do it. But we'll also try to work with you to figure out a different way to accomplish what you're trying to do. So we'll look at what you're proposing to do. That came up recently in connection with marijuana. The town wanted to do something that you couldn't quite do the way they wanted to do. But when you spend the time to figure out what is it that you want to accomplish, then we'll try to figure out a different way to do it that will work. That is without us trying to tell you what to do. We're very mindful of the fact that, you know, even though we're selectmen and we've been through a lot of things, we can give you that practical advice of what we've seen happen in other communities. But it's you all who have to make the decisions with regard to this community. If it's wrong, and there's a law in your way, and there's no way around that law, you will know that.
I guess I might follow that up. I'm more concerned with the idea that there may be a law that kind of allows us to do that, but perhaps it's not a good idea.
That's the advantage of having two selectmen, a FinCon member, and so on, and somebody like Lenny Papel, who's seen it all. I can tell you, having been to many town meetings, that you go forward with a particular proposal, what people have said in other communities, and what kind of pushback you're going to have, and what kind of issues they're going to raise, and how, if you're not ready for those answers, you're going to get killed.
Understand. We understand. It's going to be defeated, how about that?
Yes. All right, yes, because we've been there, we've done that. And that's why I say we're practical, because when you sit through so many town meetings, you hear the creative thinking of following boards of selectmen and town managers and the like. But you also hear the pushback, and you hear all the arguments. And if you're not ready for those arguments, you'll lose.
Can I follow up on that, Verge?
Yeah, go ahead, Josh, please.
So if we request a legal opinion of you folks, what's your turnaround time? A, B, is it written, or is it oral?
Well, let me answer that three ways. You call me up and you ask me, like I just said, "Is somebody entitled to see a personnel file?", I'll tell you right away. Write that in there, verbal. If you say, "I want a written opinion for that, because I need to show" somebody who won't release the file, we'll give you a written opinion. So it's pretty much up to you what you want.
That's kind of vanilla. I'm talking tutti-frutti. So if it's not a cut-and-dry opinion, how long would your turnaround time be on that opinion that we need? And how would you deliver that? Obviously, you gave us an example that is very important, but maybe not as simple as some.
We like to ask what the deadline is. So if a, if a board of appeals, for example, had an issue dealing with a detoxification facility. And so we ask, "When do you need the opinion? When is your next meeting?" So that they have what they need in time for that meeting. And how much in advance of that meeting do you need to have it? So we meet deadlines. We will get the deadline from you when you need it. We'll deliver it by then.
Thank you.
Well, and in that kind of a situation, it would be written?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
There's nothing worse than coming into a meeting of a select board, and the opinion comes in 30 minutes before the meeting starts.
Been there, done that.
Yeah, me too.
It hurts. You know, I'm sitting there at a meeting, and I got a crowd full of people, and I'm trying to read the decision, read the opinion of counsel, and I get to the end of it thinking, "I don't, I'm a lawyer. I can't figure out what my lawyer is trying to say to me."
All right, so we are over time a little bit, but I will ask the board, with courtesy, if there are any other questions you need to ask these individuals in order to effectively make a decision after we're done here. I'll thank you very much for your participation and consideration, and we'll keep in touch.
When could they begin is a good question.
Right now.
They're here to help right now.
Here we go. I got to say, congratulations on this community. I mean, it's a lovely, lovely community. I love the historic buildings, the historic, the whole history of the town, the rural character. It's kind of like my town where I'm a selectman in. And I've committed as a selectman in my town to preserve the rural character, preserve the historic nature of the community. Very much would like to do that here in Groton.
Will we ask what your town is?
Sherburne.
I agree. Nice town.
Thank you.
Howdy, Sam.
Nice to meet you.
Does it mean?
You just got a new life?
No, I just got.
He's a newbie.
I'm the kid on the block.
So can we do a first name, last name?
You don't need to slip and fall with it. Thank you so much.
Good to see you. Oh, I was at an MMA meeting. I met an MMA meeting just before. It's okay, I'm not a memorable person. I'm good, that's good. Okay, anybody need a?
I need another copy of something.
Quick break?
I missed, like, wrote them.
Right back in a minute, so please, and I'll be right back. All right, is our cell clock here? All right. They can come on in. I'll let them in. Pardon me, sorry. So we're here to ask you a set of questions and interview you for our town council position. We're, you have three people?
We do.
Okay, great. So if you'd like to introduce yourself briefly, because there's opportunity for you to expand a little bit more from the question here.
Would you like to give a brief introduction about the firm generally?
That's actually question number one, so if you want to do that. So the question number one is, tell us about your firm and the depth of experience with the attorneys who will be representing Groton. And if you want to take the time to also introduce yourself, that would be a twofer.
All right, we'll go right down the screen.
So I'm Adam Costa.
And I'm Lisa Mead.
And I'm Kate Federoff.
So we are Lee, Teller, and Costa. We're a medium-sized law firm providing general municipal services. Currently, we represent 16 communities as general counsel, and we represent several dozen others as special counsel from time to time on specific projects. Our firm got its start back in the early 2000s, primarily as a land use and zoning firm. Our predecessor firm, Lapman, Robowski, Eaton, Tellerman, had been in existence back in 2004, is when it was organized. Again, primarily representing planning boards, zoning boards, and providing those boards with counsel on specific projects. In 2008, we decided that the environment was ripe for providing general municipal services, and Lisa's history as a three-term mayor and her experience as city solicitor in the city of Somerville, as well as Jay Tellerman, my other partner's experience with Coleman and Page as a partner there for a number of years, lent themselves specifically to this general municipal service model. We decided, however, we wanted to provide services in a different way than many of the other firms were providing services. And so we pride ourselves on that model even today as a medium-sized firm. We try to get ahead of problems. We take a very proactive approach in the communities that we represent. I think you'll see that in the materials that we've submitted to you in writing. You can see that we do that a few different ways. First of all, we do it in our fee structure. And Lisa will speak at the appropriate time to the issue of fee structure and the models that we offer, and you can choose among them. We do that also in the way that we provide services on a day-to-day, week-to-week, and month-to-month basis. For example, something we've done in all of our communities is provide office hours. In some communities, we do them on a weekly basis. Other communities, we do them on a monthly basis. And still other communities, we do them on a quarterly basis, depending upon the community's need. And what those office hours are, are an opportunity for us to come, put in some face-to-face time with your municipal staff, provide an opportunity for board, commission, committee members to come and meet with the attorney who's in the office. We typically appoint lead counsel for each community with an immediate secondary backup counsel, so you have a point of contact for the firm. Your lead counsel will be here. We've proposed monthly office hours for Groton, so we'd be here on a month-to-month basis. And we can be here anywhere from a few hours to a full day if it's necessary. And our different communities handle office hours different ways. In some communities, we have scheduled 20 or 30-minute slots. Individuals can sign up for those slots in advance. Other communities, we simply show up, and people, we have an open-door policy. Officials, representatives of the town, volunteers come in as needed to speak to counsel, to get guidance on whatever might be coming before them. We feel that by providing these off- I think that next question that I was supposed to ask has been answered. All right, so I'll, I'll be right back. All right, is, uh, is it a clock here? Sorry. They can come on in. I'll let them in.
Thank you.
That's why we're bored. Not in your case. I think that next question that I was supposed to ask has been answered. All right, so I'll, I'll be right back. All right, is, uh, is it a clock here? Sorry. They can come on in. I'll let them in.
Thank you.
That's why we're bored. Not in your case. I think that next question that I was supposed to ask has been answered. All right, so I'll, I'll be right back. All right, is, uh, is it a clock here? Sorry. They can come on in. I'll let them in.
Thank you.
That's why we're bored. Not in your case. I think that next question that I was supposed to ask has been answered. All right, so I'll, I'll be right back. All right, is, uh, is it a clock here? Sorry. They can come on in. I'll let them in.
Thank you.
That's why we're bored. Not in your case. I think that next question that I was supposed to ask has been answered. All right, so I'll, I'll be right back. All right, is, uh, is it a clock here? Sorry. They can come on in. I'll let them in.
Thank you.
So you've looked into your crystal ball and you've anticipated many questions having done this. So you certainly explained how you keep your folks and your attorneys on staff up to date with ever-changing laws. So the question I'm going to ask you is a three-part question is, how will you keep our department heads and members of this board along with the town manager aware of the changing laws? And the first part of that is, what type of trainings do you currently provide to your clients?
So we provide frequent trainings to our municipal clients and we can really tailor them to what you believe you have a need for. I've done recent trainings, for example, on recreational marijuana, which is obviously a hot topic in the law. Municipalities are grappling with how to address it. And so in a couple of communities that I represent, I've provided trainings where I've appeared before either single, in one instance it was a single board, in another instance it was multiple boards that convened together and provided an overview, not only of the medical marijuana landscape, which has been in place for a number of years now, but also the recreational marijuana landscape and how the two are beginning to merge and will to some extent merge under the control of the Cannabis Control Commission coming first of the year. We've also provided more general seminars or workshops on other topics, procurement, open meeting law, public records law. We provide those with some frequency. Just a couple of weeks ago, I appeared again in another community we represent and I provided three consecutive open meeting law trainings. We did one in the afternoon when staff could be present. We did another in the early evening when individuals could be present that are served on boards. And then we did a back-to-back, a second one in the evening for individuals who couldn't make it for the six o'clock time slot. So that gives an opportunity for, to have the back and forth. These tend to be more informal. I know that the Commonwealth of Massachusetts provides some of these same trainings or seminars on things like the open meeting law. I like to think that our presentations are less formal than theirs and give more of an opportunity for back and forth. And in fact, in two of those three sessions that I recently gave, it really became a back and forth with the individuals who were there, more of a question and answer than anything else because they were grappling with specific problems that they'd had and I was able to give them direct advice.
And I just want to follow up on that. So the other thing that we do, and let's take the marijuana issue particularly, the recreational. So Kate has been the point person in our firm on recreational and medical marijuana. And given the ever-changing landscape of that law, we said, okay, Kate, you're in charge of that. You're in charge of watching all the changes, going to all the trainings, and then informing all of us, and then informing our clients. So we sent out numerous memos. I mean, as often as the law changed, we sent a new memo out and the client, you know, you know because you're dealing with it, right? Like, oh my God, I thought we were going in this direction and now we're going in this direction. So we're very cognizant of the things that are hot for you, making sure that we stay on top of it and then inform you of the changes that occur.
I think it's also important to point out that I think we give a lot of practical advice too that delves into other areas. So for example, tomorrow night I'm giving a selectmen's training because we have several new selectmen. And it's essentially what, where does their authority rest? You know, what's the extent of their authority? How do they interact with the employees of the town? So really sort of practical advice too, in addition to all of those hot topics like open meeting law, public records requests that the lawyers typically come and talk to you about. But we try to be a practical resource as well as a legal resource.
Right. And the second part of that question is, do you publish a newsletter or an e-newsletter? And if so, at what frequency do you deliver that?
I was supposed to ask if any of you.
All right, so I'll... Do you typically attend meetings of the Select Board or Boards of Selectmen, whichever they may be called in that town, in the communities that you serve?
It depends on the needs of the Board. I don't know that there's any community that we attend every single Select Board's meeting. And quite frankly, I don't know that you want us at all of your meetings.
I don't even want to attend every single one.
But we-
We'll talk later.
But we do. It depends on what the issue is, what's in front of them. You know, we had, you know, a licensing issue in one of our towns a couple of weeks ago that we were at. I have a permit where the Board of Selectmen is a special permit granting authority and was joining with the Planning Board. They wanted us there, so I was there. So it depends on what the issue is. Sometimes we're there for, you know, town meeting warrants, discussion, things like that.
Do you wait to be asked, or are you proactively looking at meeting public? I mean, it's all public information, right? Are you proactively looking to say, hey, maybe we can help you with something like that and make a call? Or how do you-
Well, so that goes to the office hours, right? So we should know about those things. You know, we generally know about what the issues are, they're going to be on the Board's selectmen agenda, and what matters are coming up. So sometimes proactively we'll say, hey, you ought to, you guys ought to consider, you know, X, the changes in marijuana law. You should think about this, or the regulations, or the new, the change in the ice cream vendor truck regulations last year. So we will, we will proactively do that. You know, we don't peruse weekly the selectmen's agendas, but we know generally what's happening and what's coming up and suggesting certain things happen.
Okay, thank you.
Ice cream vendors' trucks.
Yeah, yeah.
The fingerprinting-
Tell me about that offline or something.
Finger printing. Sometimes it's very important.
I didn't really expect to hear an attorney mention marijuana regulation and the ice cream.
He had ice cream in the same sentence.
No, they can be mixed together.
It's all about regulation. It's all about regulation.
That's not allowed.
Is that the center of research?
So the next question, we are hoping you could talk a little bit about a situation where you've been asked to provide legal advice on either a unique ethics case or a grievance or something of that sort that involved a public employee. Just tell us a little bit about how you handled it.
Kate, you want to take it?
So routine, I also handle a lot of the conflict matters, I think, unless everyone else is doing it too. But I feel like I know a lot of them. So, you know, as a matter of course, anytime there's a conflict issue that people aren't clear on, it involves, number one, whittling down and figuring out exactly what the issue is. Because in conflicts, for example, the details are critical. And even if you call the ethics line, if you have, they'll say, you know, we really need it spelled out. So that's critical to the analysis. So once you have all the facts, you just do the research. Some of the things you will know right off your head. But because conflicts is not necessarily so intuitive, you have to really dig into it. And we'll provide a written opinion to the folks who are looking. Similar with grievances, I mean, we handle everything from, so going back, not to go back to the same theme, but I try to be really proactive in my approach so that the folks at the towns that I work with on labor employment issues feel free to come with me before they make decisions. Because oftentimes, when you have a questionable action by an employee and you're contemplating termination, you're not thinking of all the consequences of your actions. So I encourage my communities to reach out to me and talk through the issue before they act, because at that point, you're in a litigious situation oftentimes. So just, I can think of three cases that came before me in the past month where they were contemplating termination. We talked about it. Two people were terminated, one person, we decided, no, that's not the right route. Let's do corrective action. Let's take other measures. Because in the end, if they came back to you, you'd be in a litigious position, which isn't a great place to be, be in. So I like to be mindful of exposure and yet also mindful of the practical needs of the town, having to work and get things accomplished. And if you have an employee who isn't really pulling their weight, you can't deal with that either. So it's a balancing act.
Thank you.
Please discuss your approach in advising the town manager and Select Board with collective bargaining.
So, I mean, it really depends upon the town and how comfortable the boards and the town manager are with handling collective bargaining. So I, prior to joining this firm, I was the senior assistant solicitor in Brockton, and I sat at the table at every negotiation. So I was a really active participant. And I worked up all the collective bargaining agreements, drafted the MOUs, all of those things. Whereas some towns like to take a different approach, and they may negotiate and then come back to me and say, what do you think of this proposal? So I had one town approach me about, what was it? Oh, it was about a uniform stipend or something. And we talked through the various possibilities and how they could come back to the union. So although I wasn't an active participant at the table, I provided advice. And then, of course, I'll review the contracts afterwards. So it really depends upon the community as to how active you would, you would like the attorney to be. Sometimes with the attorney present, it's really helpful, especially if the union is represented by an attorney. Other times, when, when your, when your groups aren't as strong or you have a really great relationship, they are uncomfortable with their attorney being there. So they're reluctant to speak out as to their, the practical issues they're facing. So it really is, is dependent upon not only the town, but also the union you're dealing with.
Thank you.
Next question's a town meeting question. So please discuss your experience with both reviewing and drafting a town meeting warrant. That's part A, and then part B would be, how would you deal with legal questions that may arise during the course of town meeting as they relate to specific warrant articles?
I'm going to talk about the problems generally, and then you can add in. So different communities handle town meeting different ways. But we have a way that we like to do it, and we work with our communities to establish a bit of a protocol if they're, if they're comfortable with it. Initially, we like to, you know, work on the warrant as it's in various drafts, beginning as far in advance of town meeting as possible. We generally also have a pre-town meeting meeting with individuals who have input into the town meeting warrant itself. The purpose of that initial meeting is to prepare ourselves for the sorts of questions that will be asked during town meeting. Generally, staff has a sense, usually your town manager has a sense, your board may have a sense of the issues that may be subject to more significant discussion at town meeting. And you probably also have a sense as to what the discussion will be and what the questions might be that will be asked. So we try to get ahead of as much of that as possible, so we're prepared. So we're not being put on the spot and asked questions that we're not ready for. So we have that meeting initially to anticipate those questions, to work through the individual articles. Obviously, we work with town manager and with your board to prepare motions in advance, et cetera. And then at town meeting, generally, we respond when we're called upon. So if there's a legal question that gets, that gets asked, something the moderator in his or her discretion can't handle, and looks to town council, we'll provide an answer. In an ideal world, we'll have those answers pre-prepared, because they're going to be exactly what we anticipated would be asked in the context of a particular warrant article. But we're all municipal law practitioners. We've all been doing this for many, many years. And so we like to think that we're familiar enough with the law that we can answer questions off the cuff if they come up concerning any of the warrant articles and usual questions concerning parliamentary procedure, town meeting practice, things of that sort.
So, you know, in different towns, have done this differently. So sometimes we draft the warrant from scratch. The town, town manager or whatever will say, here, here's what we want. You know, give me the regular articles and here generally what we want. So we draft it from scratch, and then it goes back and forth that way. Other towns, they have a way they want to do it. They draft the, do the first draft, and then we comment on it, make tweaks, change things like that. Yeah, so, which is a better way to go, by the way.
I agree with you, sir.
So it is, because you're familiar with what everybody expects.
That's right.
And so that, and so then we go back and forth and we help tweak it. And for example, if there are things that have come down the pipe that need to be changed, we'll say, oh, don't forget to add the article about X, you know? Don't forget to add the article about revolving funds or whatever. So, so we go back and forth that way. And then we draft the motions, depending what the FinCom report is. And as Adam says, you know, we, we prepare. I mean, you, you know what the questions are going to be, because you have the articles in front of you. And so there's a finite way to go, and we're, we're prepared. We're prepared with the law, we're prepared with the cases, we're prepared with the AG's opinions. You know, we're prepared on each one of those articles.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so the next question is mine. Could you explain your experiences at the appellate tax board, including the results? And what type of cases they were, commercial, residential?
Sure. So there are three attorneys at our firm that practice before the appellate tax board. You don't need to be licensed specifically for the appellate tax board, so I suppose any of us could. But there are three of us that have experienced before the appellate tax board, me being one of them. I've represented our communities on residential and non-residential matters. We don't get involved with too much frequency in the residential cases. I had a case just about four months ago, we actually settled it. Never, never quite got to the appellate tax board. But it was a residential case, involved a very complex multifamily dwelling in a very, very rural community. There were no comparables anywhere nearby. So a very challenging case. It was, there was affordable housing component to it, which brought the value down much lower than we thought in the eyes of the taxpayer. And so we were able to negotiate that case. When we typically get involved, it's in the non-residential context. Because the residential cases are usually limited to what they call the sales comparison approach. You find comparable sales. Homeowner shows up and says, here's why I believe my home is overvalued. The assessor shows up and explains the methodology that was used, and then the appellate tax board descents. The non-residential cases are far more complex. They don't typically rely as heavily on the sales comparison approach. They use the end good capitalization approach, they use the cost approach to value. Those are much more complex. You typically need the assistance of an appraiser, somebody who is certified. They can speak to the methodology that's been used and how they've arrived at a particular value for a property. And so we've worked on a number of those properties. I've worked, within the past three years, I've worked on a $22 million warehousing facility. I've worked on a $16 million commercial and warehousing facility. Both of those went to the appellate tax board. The ATB sort of took the infamous split the baby approach, as they love to do in one of those cases. And the other one was an all-had victory in favor of the town and the town's assessment.
And then our other partner, Jay Talman, also does appellate tax board cases. And his case of note, a couple of years ago, was the Situit Archdiocese case, where the Archdiocese closed down the facility. There were occupants in it. They tried to argue that it was still, should be attached. And it was, it's waterfront, like 35 acres on the water. And the town immediately had taxed at full value, and it went all the way to the appeals court in J-1. So we're very familiar with the commercial, religious designations, as well as the residential.
Thank you.
Okay. Should you become aware, a key radical question here. Should you become aware of the department head, a board member of a board, or a member of a committee, that they're about to do something ill-advised and against the advice of counsel? What action would you take?
So I think that, I think it, a lot depends on a lot of different things. But generally speaking, you, if it's a member of the selectmen, I would speak to that person. And I would likely make the town manager aware of it as well. Same way, obviously, if it's a department head, I would absolutely make the town manager aware of it immediately. So just because you go against the advice of counsel doesn't mean you're doing something wrong. Of course, if you're doing something wrong. But oftentimes, part of our job is to tell you the good, the bad, and the ugly. And then you get to decide what to do. You get to make the business decision, so long as I have informed you of what's going to happen. And when we leave the room and you decide to do whatever it is, my job is to defend you the best I can. If it's one member and not the board, well, that becomes interesting, because only the board can act as a, as a body. So I typically would go to the member, I might go to the chair, and then to the manager as well. So that's, it's, you know, it's a case-by-case basis on that. The department head, it's, that's an easier one for me. I go, I might go to the department head, depending on what it is, and say, hey, why are you doing this? But I definitely would go to the manager.
And what about committees that are appointed by the board?
I would go to the board and the manager on that. I would probably go to the manager first, and then to the chair of the board.
Thank you. Alan?
Yep.
Let's see if I can follow up.
So I guess that begs a question on my mind. If we hired your firm, for whom do you work?
The Board of Selectmen.
Thank you.
Okay, so my question is more about land use and zoning bylaws. Regarding land use and zoning, have you been routinely in the past to conduct a comprehensive review of local zoning bylaws for codification to improve clarity and to remove contradictions or redundancy? And then have you conducted a similar review for all bylaws and policies and various voting committees within a town?
So all of us at various times, particularly because of the work for the warrants, have done sections of zoning bylaws, sections of general bylaws, things like that. Our, we all cut our teeth on land use, Jay and Adam and I. That's where we cut our teeth. I just got done recodifying the town marblehead. It didn't pass, the, there was issue with one little section, it didn't pass at town meeting, but they're going back. And I've recodified, you know, I don't know, half dozen, 12 bylaws, something like that. So zoning bylaws. And Jay has done a couple as well. So it's something we're very familiar with. General bylaws, usually somebody doesn't just go do the whole general bylaw thing. Although one of my towns right now is taking a very interesting approach. They have a bylaw committee. And that bylaw committee first went through the bylaw and cleaned up the organization of it, like the numbering and things like, they did, they don't use E-code or anything. They've done it all on their own, which I don't recommend. And they, and so they've done that, then we review it, and then it goes to town meeting. And then they've taken sections of it, they think that need to be reorganized substantively, and combined or eliminated. And then they took that to town meeting, and they did that. And now they're working on a more specific review of each one of the bylaws substantively. So it's, I think it's an interesting approach. It doesn't hit the town all at once with a whole brand-new recodification of the general bylaw. So I, I've actually recently been asked to give a price on a general bylaw recodification. So I think it's, you do have to take that approach. You look at each one separately, you look at the organization, which is what you do in the zoning bylaw. So the long answer is yes. Short answer is no question.
Thank you.
John?
Have you been involved representing municipalities during a court appeal of local zoning requirements? If so, would you please provide an example?
Sure. I'm, I guess I'm going to ask a question in response to your question. So when you say-
You can't ask me questions. You can't do your own questions. Not with me.
I guess I need clarification. A court appeal of, of the application of a zoning bylaw?
It's an appeal of, of a local zoning requirement.
Okay. So I handle a substantial portion of the firm's litigation. Jay and I are both litigators. Two other attorneys in our firm, two associates, are also litigators. As Lisa has said, we, we all cut our teeth in land use and zoning laws. So I've been litigating zoning cases for quite some time. And we've taken cases to land court, Superior Court. I've had a couple of cases in district court, although that's infrequent. And we've taken cases up to the appeals court as well. In, in many cases, there are appeals of decisions rendered by zoning boards, planning boards. Those decisions are approvals, and the appeal is by a disgruntled neighbor or on a butterscrew. In those instances, we look to, in the first instance, the zoning board or the planning board that issued the decision. I don't know if your select, if your Board of Selectmen is a special permit granting authority for anything?
No.
Okay.
Our planning board is.
Okay, so we look to your planning board to see whether they have an interest in defending the decision of the board. And then ultimately, we look to the Board of Selectmen to see whether you'd like to fund the, the defense of the decision. More often than not, I would say our municipalities opt to play a more passive role in that litigation, where there is a permittee, a recipient of a permit, that will be defending the decision of the board, because he or she or they benefit from it. In instances where you've opted to deny a permit based upon an interpretation of zoning or an application of zoning, and there's then an appeal by the applicant, well, then you're in a position where you either have to defend that decision, that denial, or you have to risk being defaulted. And so we're involved in those with great frequency. Special permits, variances, site plan approvals, building permit, administrative appeals that are brought to the ZBA, determinations made by, interpretations made by your zoning enforcement official, which I presume is your building commissioner or building inspector, that are brought before the zoning board of appeals. Chapter 40B comprehensive permit appeals, we've been involved in. Chapter 40R, smart growth zoning. We've been involved in all those sorts of matters when they begin with your zoning board and your planning board, and ultimately proceed to court. And again, the extent to which we get involved, we first defer to the board that has issued the decision. And then ultimately, we defer to the Board of Selectmen as to the extent you want us to, to play an active role in that litigation. And we've had great success in defending determinations made by zoning boards of appeals and by planning boards in all different courts. But again, most of the litigation ends up in the land court, some of it ends up in the Superior Court, occasional cases in the district.
Thank you.
So the next question has to do more or less with fee structure. And would you discuss how your firm works to provide efficient yet effective legal representation and manage costs? That's probably the first part of the question. And then the second part, obviously, is, do you offer a retainer? So what is included, what's excluded? And what is the hourly rate for the things that are excluded? And please be as specific as possible, because this is a very important determining factor in addition to your vast wealth of experience and consideration for us to hire your firm.
So I will note for the board that the RFP response has three pages of-
I know.
Perhaps rather than going over each of those pages, we can read it. If there's anything within that, they'd like, you'd like to explain?
I read it three times, and, you know, well, I think I understand it. I'm looking for you to dummy it down if you can.
So we, yeah, so we, do you want to talk about it, or you want me to?
Go ahead.
Okay, so we, we give the town three different options. And we have towns that do all of these. And it really is whatever floats your boat and works for you. So one of our options is a flat fee, period, that includes all litigation, our regular general counsel services, enforcement of general bylaws, you know, land use litigation, wetlands litigation, Board of Health matters, town office hours, opinions, up to two seminars a year, I think. And so that, that's what we call all-in. What's excluded from that is labor is always, labor is always billed separately, because it's hard to, it's hard to pin down labor. And so labor is billed separately on an hourly basis. And appellate tax work, the regular appellate tax work, so just regular, like residential appeals, that's not included, because that's typically handled by your, by your assessor. And your tax title work is not included in that. Usually get, folks usually have a separate counsel for tax title work.
So more complex appellate tax board cases, the sort of non-residential cases, those are included?
Those are included. So, so that's, that's generally what that is. Then we have a model-
And that fee, just so the public at home, because they're-
Sure, $6,500 a month.
$6,500.
The, the next choice is, on the menu, is a, what we call bifurcated fee. And that is litigation excluded. So all your general municipal work, office hours, town meeting, opinions, seminars, attending, you know, hearings and things like that. All your general municipal work except for litigation and except for labor counsel. And that's a flat fee of $4,500. We would bill litigation on an hourly basis. Now, I have some towns that think that they can really control litigation. And I have to tell you, one of our, one of our things is, if we're there and we can be proactive, we prevent a lot of litigation, right? A lot of firms like to have litigation, because that's where you make a lot of money. But our goal is actually to be proactive and try to prevent litigation. You can't always prevent it, let's be clear. And there are things that you want to enforce or do, because it's the right thing for the board, and you don't want to have to worry, you don't want it to be May, and you say, oh, what's our legal budget? Because I'd really like to do an enforcement action over there. But we don't have enough money in our legal budget this year, so we're going to have to wait. But the flat fee model, you don't have to worry about that. You, you know, you know what your budget's going to be. You know how you can work all year long. And then we have just a regular hourly model. Even in our hourly model, you don't get billed for secretarial time, you don't get billed for paralegal time, you don't get billed for copies, you don't get billed for regular mailing. That's just all included. We're not, you know, we don't nickel and dime our clients. And then certainly in the, in the flat fees, that's, that's all included as well. So travel's included in the flat fees, hourly is billed from the closest office, which would be probably the new report office.
See hourly rate for labor?
$1.90. So we're happy to, if you've got a better idea, we're happy to talk to you about that, too. We have found, you know, our towns like these, they depend on them. Some towns just like to pay the hourly rate, that's fine with us, too. But, you know, we found that this model works. You know, it kind of evens out over the year. Town meeting time, our effective hourly rate is a little bit lower, because everybody wants us, and we're there a lot. You know, August tends to be a little bit slower, so our effective hourly rate is a little higher, except for that, it doesn't matter. You know what your, you know what your monthly bill's going to be, and we know what the monthly bill's going to be. And we provide the work no matter what. So that's the model. Those are the models.
Yeah.
Are you sure? May I?
Are you saying that your hourly rate varies over the course of a year?
No.
No, 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 no.
They were doing analysis, dividing the flat rate by the number of hours they're going to work in a particular month.
Right.
Their intake.
The effective hourly rate, is what I'm saying. So if you, if we have a flat fee, in one month we work 65 hours, and we have that same flat fee, and we work 20 hours another month, that's all I'm saying.
We provide itemized bills.
Oh, no matter what?
No matter what. So, you know, some of the communities have said during the interview process, well, a flat fee, but now how do we know if we're making out or you're making out?
Right.
We provide you the itemized bill, the same way you'd get one if we were billing hourly. You can do the math. I mean, I had one community that came to me recently and said, you charge us $650 an hour one month. And I said, I know that's wrong, let's make sure you get all the numbers. It's going to be itemized bill. We never do quite that. And surely enough, you can, I mean, you can divide the number of hours into the hourly rate, and you can, to the flat fee, and you can determine the hourly rate for any month. And you'll see that some months, as our partner Jay likes to say, some months we eat the bear, and some months the bear eats us. It just, it evens out over the course of a year effectively.
But you'll get a bill that's very clear about what work we're doing, who's doing it, how long they're working on it.
So, so just to follow up again, on the first option, that $6,500 per month, which doesn't include labor for litigation.
That is correct.
Does that include litigation, not labor?
Includes litigation, not labor. When I said labor for litigation, does it include labor for collective bargaining?
No, no, so, when I say labor-
I'm just looking for clarification on this, you following me?
Yeah. So when I say labor, that's labor work. So anything that's labor. So if you have a grievance that has gone to arbitration, that's labor, that's billed on an hourly rate. If you're doing negotiations that are labor negotiations, that's on an hourly rate.
Labor law.
Labor law.
And what about CBAs?
That's an hourly rate.
What is that?
Collective bargaining agreement. So if you were reviewing a collective bargaining agreement that this board and the town manager negotiated with one of our units, that would be as well billed on hourly rate.
That's right.
Okay.
Anything that's labor-
I just want to fully understand.
Is hourly. On the, on the first proposal, any litigation not labor is included, except for the-
We've given some thought to try to work out a flat fee model for communities that we can pitch where we include labor. It's challenging to do, because in some communities, based upon when your contracts come up, it's a lot one year and then hardly anything the next year. And so you feel like you're getting burnt in those years when you don't have a lot, or those months when you don't have a lot. So we've just determined that no matter how we try to make the mathematics work, it just makes a whole lot of sense to keep our flat fee rates somewhat lower and not work labor into them and bill labor hourly.
You've clarified, thank you.
Becky?
Right, my question. Would you give, please give us an example of a recent legal decision involving a municipality that you have disagreed with, and explain why?
Decision made by a municipality?
No, you're a legal decision?
Involving a municipality.
A case.
Case.
Case perhaps it went against a municipality.
Every case coming out of the Joint Labor Management Commission? That's amazing, I'm not-
No, you believe that.
I'm a management lawyer.
So I mean, obviously, the ones that are nearest, the nearest to us are the ones that we lose. And we're not perfect, so we, we lose cases from time to time. We were involved in a case, not especially active, but it was a case that was filed in the land court in 1994. It was still being litigated in 2016. It lost its way twice, was active for about two years after it had been filed. It was a, without giving too many details about the case, it involved the division of a property that had a structure on it already to create a second law that was illegal, we alleged. There was a house built on that second law. The neighbors appealed the building permit that issued. The ZBA overturned the building inspector and said it shouldn't have issued the permit. There was a further appeal by the homeowner, saying, yeah, but I got the permit rightfully. Filed in 1994, bit of activity for a couple of years, nothing happened for eight years. The judge got wind of it and realized it was in the books and says, what's going on here? You're going for a status conference. Parties came in, he gave them strict orders to get going again. Case out dormant for 10 more years. Case ad dormant for 10 more years. Case came alive again. So the municipality's perspective is, you know, they, they wanted obviously their zoning bylaw to be affirmed. On the one hand, they didn't want a structure to be built on. On the other hand, they wanted to stand by the strength of their, their zoning bylaw and the belief that this shouldn't have been, the interpretation that was being given to the zoning provision that would have allowed this house to be built was wrong. Ultimately, the case went to trial. Again, the town was a co-defendant to a private party, so we played somewhat of an active role, but not as active as we might otherwise be. And ultimately, the case was lost. The plaintiff prevailed. In that case, the plaintiff was the party that had constructed the home. And so the, the home, the home stands and it stands today and it'll continue to stand. It ultimately came down on a technicality because of the, the speed with which the neighbors appealed. The action that occurred on the site was determined that they essentially made their appeal more than 30 days after they should have had notice that the building permit issued. Of course, the case law that determined that you have notice when you actually see the construction occurring was decided 10 years after the case was filed, but the judge thought it was appropriate to retroactively apply that case law to a 1994 case. We disagree with the outcome, I disagree with the outcome, but the cards fell where they made. The town said, we're not fighting this in the appeals court. And the private party said the same thing and so the decision became final. But I'd say that's one I disagree with after 22 years of litigation.
So can I just ask, was there ever any attempt to find a compromise there?
Absolutely.
And was, did you, did you think that there were possible compromises?
Absolutely. You know, we, it's a delicate balance as an attorney to know when to fight and to know when to settle.
Sounds like a card game.
Or a song. Or a song. But yes, I thought that this was the case that begged for settlement.
Right.
We attempted to engage in discussions amongst the private parties. Again, the town is sort of a third party here. There were, there was a group of residents on one side, there was a property owner who was not going to tear down a structure. But there were, there was some flexibility in terms of land being conveyed to an abuser, they would not be used, there was, there were some options. So we explored, we really thought outside the box, we explored lots of options amongst ourselves in settlement. We brought in a third-party mediator, we attended formal mediation sessions, one that went the entire day, just couldn't get there. We got close, but just couldn't get there. Private parties were too dug in after 20 years.
Okay. One last question, yeah? So what is your approach when issuing a legal opinion? And I'll, I'll phrase, reframe this like I did for the previous party. I would, I would prefer, and this is just me personally, that someone tell me why I shouldn't do something rather than this is the way you can do it. And so with that in mind, how do you, what's your approach towards legal opinions in your, in your towns?
So again, it depends on the issue, but, you know, our goal is, I like to hear what you want to do. I like to hear what the goal is. And then I do the research to figure out whether you can get to that goal and if you can't, why? And if there is a different way to go, to achieve the goal. And then I would draft a legal opinion after that. But laying out the pros and cons and maybe the alternative ways to do it. I typically draft a legal opinion and give it to the person who asked for it, from me, in draft form, so that we can have a conversation about it before I finalize it and issue it. And I know what you're, I mean, I think that's pretty much the general practice. But, but again, you know, you make the business decisions. And so my job is to tell you what the risks are and maybe how you can achieve your goal. And you get to decide whether or not you want to take that risk. And then my job is to defend it, you know, tooth and nail.
And it does depend upon the question asked. I mean, I've been asked by boards of selectmen or other boards, you know, here's the question, we want an objective answer. Is it yes or is it no? We do the research, those are the easy opinions. We do the research, the answer is yes or no, they don't tell me what they, they want the outcome to be. They're just looking for answers to whether it's yes or no. And then we've been given, asked the question, you know, this is what we hope to achieve, can we do it? And we'll research it and hopefully the answer is yes and we can find a way to get it done legally. But if the answer's no, because we don't find precedent that supports that position, we'll tell you that. The advocacy starts when the litigation starts. Again, as a litigator, usually often by the time I get a case, not when I'm dealing with the day-to-day, but when, by the time I get a case, it's, you know, here's your position. And I might advise you as to, if there are weaknesses in that position that might cause you to go the route of mediation or settlement. I've had those hard discussions with municipal clients. Listen, I know that you really want to fight this and you want me to go to trial and we might be, you know, weeks away from trial, but I'm fairly confident you're going to lose this case and here's why. We have that conversation in executive session and then we decide how to proceed from there. And if I'm going to advocate for the position, as long as I'm not advocating for some violation of the law that can't possibly be justified, I'm going to advocate for that position. But I, I want to make it known to you that there are some real risks there so that you can decide whether there is a benefit in exploring settlements or mediation rather than litigating to the bitter end.
I think it's the, the worst quality of a lawyer too, to just be a yes fan. Sometimes you have to have those conversations and I think all of us have been in that situation where the conversation's been hard and the people making the decision are resistant. But I have said on more than one occasion, listen to my advice, then you do what you want and we will try to fix it. You know, because you're always trying to get, you're always trying to protect the town. But I think it's important to have those hard, honest questions, conversations and give the person the opportunity to perhaps change their mind.
Or, or find a different way to accomplish your goal.
Or find a different way. Yep.
And that goes, and we'll just bring it full circle, that goes to the, the way we practice. And that is, we get to know what you want or what's available or where things are or who's doing things. And so that, that's a better opportunity for us to say, hey, but wait a minute, you might not be able to go down this road, but if you go down this road, you're going to be able to get what you want in a different way.
Josh, follow up?
Just an additional question. If we were to hire your firm, who would be the lead and who would be the co?
Adam's going to be the lead and I'll be the co.
Thank you.
Anything else from the board? All right, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
All right, we got five minutes.
Thank you all for coming in.
We have three minutes.
Thanks.
Not that we're keeping track, but-
Thank you.
So nice to meet you.
Thank you for coming out.
It's a pleasure.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming in.
We're a lucky mayor.
Good work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We should put the chairs back.
Oh, yeah, sure.
No, leave them set, that's fine.
No, Bobby.
Good evening. Well, thank you.
Not you. No, I know.
Because that day, we didn't even hit the bridge now.
Thank you.
Appreciate you willing to come out tonight and spend the last hour of our three-hour-long session with us. So we have a, we have a list of questions that different members are going to ask you. I think most of us know who you are and what you are, but we still would like to be fair and give you an opportunity to introduce yourself, as well as tell us about your firm and the depth of experience and, and the attorneys who'll be representing Groton. Probably know some of that, but please, the public should also hear some.
Okay, well, I will do some introductions and then turn it over to David and Brian to talk to you about themselves and their experience here. My name's Lauren Goldberg and I'm the managing attorney at KP Law. KP Law previously was known as Coleman Page and the firm has represented the town for approximately 20 years, 25 years, sorry. We are a municipal law firm. About 98% of our work is municipal and other public sector entity work. We really pride ourselves on creating an appropriate team to represent every town where there's a primary contact and a backup attorney who are really the kind of traditional town council, people that are familiar with your town, with your boards, with you, who work closely with you and really understand what's going on, what your priorities are, what your local legislation is, your charter, your bylaws. And then the benefit of using the firm, and as I hope you are aware, is that we have subject area, subject area experts in really every single area of municipal law that you can imagine and sometimes would hope not to imagine needing. So for example, some of us came from the state, I came from the elections division and previously from the public records division, and each of us has an experience like that that we're able to bring to the benefit of our clients. One of the other real benefits of using the firm is we see situations play out all over the state, somewhat similar to the way that the MMA, Massachusetts Municipal Association does. And so we have the benefit of this kind of broad view that allows us to say, well, Community X is thinking of this, why, you know, this issue, have we seen anything like that somewhere else that could be useful? And I think back to when you were all looking at your, whether to adopt a charter and you had the group that was kind of looking at, or whether to amend the charter, that was looking at all sorts of different issues. We were able to say, you know, have you thought about this? Have you looked at that? Basically because we have seen the way things work and don't work in other communities. So I think you're also aware that we do stay on top of all new legislation and special cases of significance. With the new marijuana law, for example, we've been working throughout the state to help clients kind of react to, to it and also implement it in the way that's right for them. So we send out what we call the updates, we do training seminars on issues of importance, public records and open meeting, for example, you've seen me on those things. But we have people that do trainings on Corey and sexual harassment prevention training and, you know, how to run a public hearing. So that, those types of kind of what we like to refer to as value-added opportunities exist and are available on a regular basis. You know, they really inform all the work that we do. So with that, if there's anything else that I can provide, you know, I'm certain to, to jump in and assist. But, you know, you have a team that's worked here for a long time, David Dineski as the primary and Brian Mazur as backup in labor and employment. And you're, as, you know, they, you, while you know them, certainly they will give you a little bit of their own background. As you said, it's good for the public to hear and it's good to be reminded of the kind of expertise and experience that we all bring to bear. I will say as well, thank you so much for having us tonight and we really do enjoy representing the town and working with great people in the town, not just this board, but also department heads, the town clerk. So thank you for, for having us tonight. With that, David.
Andre, questions? If not, I'd like to say just briefly, in 2008, I believe, we had an interview here and one of the questions that was posed to us was, why do you want to work for Groton? Why do you want to be our town council, continue to be our town council? And my answer was, because you folks have and do challenging and interesting work, both to advance the cause of the town from your perspective. And it's intellectually stimulating for us as attorneys. There are a number of communities that have different personalities. There's a stay the course, there's a let's go way out ahead, there's let's look to where we can do our best, make our best effort, where is a good challenge for us? And my view is you have a very good balance of all of those things. And working with you, both, I think broadens our perspective, I hope it broadens yours by some of the things we've been able to bring to you. But it is a challenge and it's intellectually stimulating. You are a vibrant community.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Brian Mazur. I've been your labor employment attorney now for the better part of a decade. I've been with KP Law since July of 2005. My primary duties and responsibilities at KP are labor employment, practice and labor employment representation for cities and towns. I would echo David's sentiments relative to the work that we have done in Groton and Groton's approach since I've been involved with the town. Normally, my role in, in town representation is to labor employment matters, grievance in arbitration hearings, collective bargaining negotiations in the event that a town requires assistance in that respect. But a lot of what we do as labor attorneys, and I'm one of eight labor attorneys in the Labor Employment Practice Group, we have roughly over collectively 100 years of experience that we draw from in and amongst ourselves and each other with regular meetings and things such as that and discussions. So if there are issues that I haven't dealt with, which are few and far between, I can always draw upon my colleagues and we bandy about various circumstances and for purposes of, you know, assisting the clients that we represent. But getting back to my previous point, when it comes to the work I generally do, a lot of it is advising on a day-to-day basis. Labor employment work can generally be somewhat fast-paced, need-based, it can be emergency situations that present themselves on a day-to-day basis. So we have to be responsive as labor attorneys. And that's one of the things that I, you know, we pride ourselves on, not only myself but all the other attorneys within the firm and within the group. And, you know, a lot of those issues deal with Family Medical Leave Act questions, circumstances involving employees' conduct. And we have to react and be responsive, you know, to client needs rather rather quickly. It's something that we, you know, pride ourselves on at KP Law. It's something that's ingrained, is ingrained in us. Pretty much when we start there, I know it's something that's been a big part of my practice since I've been there in 2005. I would echo what Lauren and David said, that it's been a real pleasure of representing you and representing your interests in various forums. We are very committed to building relationships at KP Law and we feel like we've built a very stable, solid relationship with the town and we're hopeful and desirous of seeing that continue going forward. Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here and see.
Yep, so I had question number two, which you've already answered. It was about kind of your structure and who would be our lead and it's a good job. Onward.
Sorry, Allison, we're going to give you different questions next time. Twice as half. John?
I have a question for you. How does your firm keep current on the ever-changing mass general laws relating to municipalities, i.e. municipal finance, procurement, labor, marijuana, et cetera?
We monitor on basically a daily basis what's going on at the State House and that's through the State House News Service. We also, in our practice groups, will keep track of what's on agenda, what's coming up in a committee for a hearing, what's being considered by the stakeholders for a particular issue. Often it might be the Massachusetts Municipal Association, but it may be certain other groups and most certainly recently for the last year plus, all those stakeholders who were involved in recreational marijuana. We also, just by simple reading, if you will, of general press, will keep track of things. But we do focus on those sources of information who are most directly connected to the policymakers and the- and legislators themselves.
Yeah, and I can add to that, because I think part of what I think really makes us special is that we have an interest in knowing these things, just like you have an interest in knowing these things. We have a real interest in knowing these things. There's a woman in the office, it used to be my job, and she came to us from the state as well, and so she monitors the General Court's website every day, as David indicated, to look at any special acts, et cetera. And then part of our practice really exposes us to these things on a regular basis. For example, if we know that a case is pending before the SJC on a particular matter, we're going to be paying attention. When's it going to come down? We need to know. So, you know, whether it's an elections thing, or if it's a land use thing, that really makes a difference to us. And probably you've seen our E updates, and those come out immediately. So if an SJC case is decided, the next week we'll have a fully analyzed memo for you. One of the things that the municipal, Mass Municipal Lawyers Association does, and which is made up of a lot of individual solo practitioners, they kind of share those things amongst themselves. But we really do that in-house. So, you know, as Brian was saying, if some new circumstance comes up, you know, let's just take the marijuana law for an example, because that had so many different aspects. It had elections, it had zoning, it had labor and employment. And so we immediately started studying it in our separate practice groups, and then coming together to do kind of generalized education for all of the attorneys as well. So it's really important to us, the way that it's important to you. And, you know, we really need to know those things, and so it's worth it to us to invest in being on top of those.
A recent case, I'm sorry, a recent case was decided by the SJC that got a lot of press, was the Janus decision involving non-union member agency fee payers. Just as an example, we were aware of the circumstances surrounding that case, its potential implications on our clients. We had drafted basically two separate E updates, months in advance of the anticipated decision, in the event that, you know, there was a decision for the unions or against the unions, that we could then get that out and distribute it to our clients as quickly as we possibly could, because there were questions literally, you know, within minutes and hours of the decision coming down, "What does this mean for us?"
I want to probe a couple of things, because they concern me. For the last 11 years I've been on the planning board, so last year, a lot of focus on marijuana. I never heard anything from KP. The only reason I knew KP was doing anything was when I went to a central mass planning commission meeting, and I found some material on a table. So I don't know whether that's a distribution issue, or what the problem is, but I personally felt very unsupported. And so I'd like you to, I don't want to go back and rehash, but something didn't work there, for me, anyway.
Yeah. Well, obviously, as a managing attorney, that's very troubling for me to hear. We spend a lot of time and effort on making sure that we not only prepare those materials, but also that they get out to the people that need them. And, you know, we do have several mailing lists. I will certainly go back and check to make sure, you know, why you didn't get it, and why you or the planning board wasn't on it, because we have planners and planning board members who are on one list. And certainly, for marijuana, we tried to have the broadest approach possible. I know we also planned several trainings, I shouldn't call them really trainings, but several information sessions all over the state that we did, really, you know, on our own expense, to be able to touch as many people in terms of knowing about the law as possible. Also, on our website, we have posted, as we've gone along, all of our materials as they've been updated. And Katie Lockman, who is kind of the lead for the firm on marijuana issues, spoke at the MMA and several other regional events on purpose, so that we could get that information out. Sometimes, I think, it does, there is a kind of a back and forth that's useful, you know, where if something's going on and you haven't gotten that, we would, you know, reach out to us, because certainly, if it's a big deal, we've been working on it. And so if there is something where there's been a, you know, something that fell between the cracks, for whatever reason, we want to hear from you. You know, it's feedback that I always want to take into account and try to adjust for. I know David, same thing, you know, if you have feedback for David, let him know, and certainly say, you know, "What's the firm doing on marijuana?" But ultimately, you know, it's our job to get that information out, and again, I will check the lists. It's surprising to me, but obviously, it is what it is. We can't, we can't go back and fix it. At the same time, we have significant-
We need to do something better in the future.
Yeah, yeah.
For me, being retired, I can go wherever I want, any day I want, and visit a seminar or wherever it is in the state, okay? But before I was retired, I worked 60 hours a week.
Yeah.
And there are people sitting here who work 60 hours a week or more, and really rely on you as an information source, because there just isn't time for them to run out to all these other activities.
Yeah.
All right. So it, I won't go any further, but just give it some thought, some review, because it didn't work for me on the marijuana.
Well, I certainly will make sure to double-check the list, because as I say, we maintain these E update lists, so I will go back and double-check and make sure that you're on there. But, you know, more important is the feedback generally, and we will-
Thank you.
-take a look at that. Thank you.
Mr. Deegan?
Sure. So this is a multi-part question for you folks. You explained how you folks keep up to date on changes in municipal law and court decisions. But how will your firm work to keep department heads and members of this board aware of changing laws? And part A of that is, what type of trainings do you currently supply to your clients in order to keep us abreast of those changes?
There's a list of trainings that runs a pretty broad gamut that's in the proposal. We recently did, in the fall, open meeting law training here, and a sexual harassment prevention training. And we solicit from all our clients, is there a particular subject you'd like us to come and do a training on? And we do those at no charge. As Lauren mentioned, we also distribute periodically through the year, updates to clients, E updates, other kinds of print information, so that when we identify something that is new, and we believe it's something that you should be aware of, and we want you to be aware of, we will provide that information. Again, to the extent we need to address any distribution, lists will certainly do that. But our education is for your benefit. So when we learn of something, we disseminate that information to you.
So basically, you just answered part B of that question, which was the newsletter, E newsletter. I guess the only thing would be, at what frequency, and I think you just said as needed or as it comes out, correct?
Right. There will be times when there are a lot of things happening, and then there'll be some dry times, especially-
Like August.
In this year, when we've got, the legislature's going to end, and we're going to be into an election.
Yeah. Can I add too? We always will say we'll do two at no charge, you know, whenever you ask for them to. But we very rarely will say no to doing additional trainings at no charge. We'll do them no matter what. You know, if you said, "Oh, could you do a training on this?" You know, we would do the work to get ready for it, and to write it up, and we've, you know, added seminars over the years based on people's interests. Certainly, it's worth it to us to do the work needed to get up the data on a particular issue, or to, you know, put it into a PowerPoint and have someone come out and do it, because other communities will also benefit eventually from that as well. And so it's important for us, it's important for you. But, you know, truly, if there was, and I think a few years ago I did open meeting and public records, and then I came in and talked to this board about it, I think it was just a year later. But, you know, there's many towns where we'll go out and we'll do like a new officials' training, where we go out maybe on a Saturday morning for those people who are working the 60-hour work weeks, and we do a new officials' training, and we do public records, open meeting, conflict of interest law, and then other board and committee members can come too, but it's specifically to give people an opportunity to come in. Another thing that we can do is, we can schedule a town employee-side training, you know, at 3 o'clock, so 3 to 5, do open meeting and public records and conflict of interest with town officials, and then, I mean, town employees, and then do one at 6:30 for boarding committee members. So whatever it is that you need, we're going to do it. And, you know, I always say, I think I learn a ton every time I come out and give one of these trainings, because people raise issues and circumstances that, you know, if you're not doing a meeting like this every day, you don't necessarily anticipate. But, you know, and I think it's the same, that you guys learn things from our experience as well, so it's a good process. And it's also an opportunity to get to know other people, not necessarily the lead, so you get to meet other people at the firm, which I also think is a positive.
And then the third and final part of that question, and over the years, we've talked about this, and I want to know, what would you propose as part of your retainer for having office hours, for staff, as well as for boards and committees, and at what frequency?
We have a current retainer that doesn't contemplate that arrangement, and the proposal that we presented to you doesn't reflect that. But obviously, we would be willing to arrange that. There are certain communities that like to do that, to have a regularly scheduled appointment, and we could certainly incorporate that into any retainer fee agreement.
So would that require revision to the retainer proposal as submitted, depending on frequency?
Yes, depending on frequency, exactly.
Okay. I mean, we have some communities that have office hours every week. We have some that have once a month, we have some that have twice a month. We have others that really like us to come out once a month just to a department head meeting, you know, more to kind of be on-site, to hear what staff is hearing, and to be able to answer questions for staff at that meeting. And it is, it's kind of, David had mentioned earlier, it's personality-driven, meaning town personality. Some towns feel like council should be kind of the last resort, and shouldn't be involved in the day-to-day in the same way. And others really feel like it's a good place to start. They, you know, feel like perhaps a question should start with council, and then do follow-up later. So we are your council, and we do things the way it's best for you. And so if you said, "Yes, we really want office hours," then we can figure out how to make that proposal, or to provide those office hours in the way that made the most sense for you.
Thank you so much.
So I think that the, this next question has been answered, I defer on that.
What's your guidance, practice on attending meetings of the select board and the communities that you serve?
I'm not sure.
So we don't often have you at our select board meetings, but we do have you occasionally.
Sure.
Is there a better method? Would you recommend something different? Is there, do you find other things work better for other towns? What do you, what do you do?
I mean, personally, I believe it's client-driven. You know, if the client feels that it's a benefit to have counsel at meetings on a more regular and recurring basis, then we can make ourselves available for that purpose. If there are certain circumstances that present themselves throughout the year, a specific case, whatever, you know, if it's a land use case or a labor case, we could, you know, be available for that.
I know, I'm sorry, I know often it's through, we do phone calls.
Sure.
Is that preferable? Is there reasons for phone calls versus in presence?
Client-driven, again.
I mean, I personally like the face time. I like being in front of our clients. I like interacting and seeing people and interacting on a face-to-face basis. But it could be a budgetary reason in which, you know, you want to have us involved via phone, and that's perfectly appropriate. Sometimes, from a labor standpoint, I think it's better to be in the room, depending upon the specific nature of the matter, because there could be other people in the room, and it's beneficial to have counsel there for purposes of assisting you and advising you throughout the process. It all, again, it's really driven by, you know, the needs of the client, the specifics of the situation.
So, Mr. Tur, could I just add something to that?
Don't call me very little.
So I think in cities, typically, the council, the city solicitor, attends every single city council meeting. And so there is kind of a city way of doing things, and that is very common. There's also kind of a few communities that are represented often by just a solo practitioner, where that person shows up at every meeting and kind of sits at the table and acts, and I, I don't know how to say it exactly, but kind of like the sixth selectman, you know, who weighs in and gives policy advice, and, you know, really is kind of engaged in the decision-making. You know, our perspective has typically been that our job is not to make decisions for you, but to inform you about all of the risks and benefits of one particular decision versus another. And so, you know, we have found that that typically is issue-driven. Client-driven is the word that they're using, but I think it's issue-driven, meaning you may be just fine working on XYZ things, but then have real questions about Y thing, and so then say, "Hey, can you come in? We're going to talk about this, this may meeting, and we might need you the next meeting and the meeting after that." And so typically, that is the way most clients use us, because we are not providing policy advice, we're providing legal advice. And we're saying, "Yes, this policy that you guys might want to follow has X, Y, or Z risks, and this version has less risk, and this has less." Of course, we're your council, so whatever decision you make about the policy that's more appropriate for you, we're going to defend. So an example I can give you is, let's say there's a bylaw that you have that you want to enforce. You don't have to enforce it, but it's important to you, and you want to enforce it. And we might say to you, "That might cost some money, that's litigation, litigation is expensive, here are the risks, here are the benefits," and then the decision is yours. So even if we think it's costly and risky, it doesn't mean that that's, you know, we're not the police, we're not telling you, "You can't do that," but we're trying to lay out for you what those risks and benefits might be. So, you know, again, I think it's true, we will come to whatever meetings you would like us at, but we don't often come to every meeting. And again, I think it's because of that kind of sixth selectman issue that happens when council's at every meeting.
Josh, you had a follow-up?
No, it's just, well, yes, I do. If we did want you at specific meetings, rather than every meeting, because it would be my preference certainly not to have you at every meeting, not that we don't enjoy having you here, but we've been pretty self-sufficient. But if we do require you at meetings, or the planning board does, is that included within the retainer?
I think frequency base would also be the answer to that. If it were intermittent, likely not. But if we're talking about something that has more regularity, I think for both of our benefits, we would want to know what's involved, and if we need to make an adjustment, we would do so.
Well, I think over the years, you've seen the frequency that-
Right.
...the boards require you, and I think it's worked out pretty well for the boards as well for your firm.
And we have done a number, if not all of those, for the last several years, within the retainer.
Absolutely, yeah. I just want to point, so the point is if we need you, or another board needs you, on occasion, then that would be included within the retainer?
Yes.
That's the question. Thank you.
All right. So the next question is mine. We're asking you to please describe a situation, and tell us how you handle it, obviously, where you've been asked to provide legal advice on an ethics case or a grievance involving a public employee.
Something on Groton.
Yeah.
Yes. Brian's answered a bunch of those.
Is ethics case or a grievance involving, involving an employee?
Right. And obviously, we're looking more for kind of your approach than we are for-
Fair enough.
-the nitty-gritty, revealing details.
Yeah, no, 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 I wouldn't want to divulge specific details and get into the minutia that way. I mean, you know, if, if a grievance is presented to one of our clients, and the client reaches out for assistance, normally, the first thing I'm going to ask for, if I don't already have it, which I certainly normally would, is a copy of the specific for relevant collective bargaining agreement that pertains to the grievance. And from there, it would be a circumstance where I would speak to the town administrator or town manager, or whomever my point of contact is, to get really more specific information relative to the facts and circumstances surrounding that grievance. If it's a disciplinary grievance, let's say an individual was issued a written warning or suspended for a day, I would want more facts as to what led to that specific disciplinary sanction. Are there written reports? Was there any type of an investigation? Where's the investigation report? Is there anything on video or audio that I need to listen to in, you know, anticipation of preparing a grievance response for the town, or the city, as the case may be? From there, I would review all of that information, speak to the point of contact, and then assist the point of contact, again, if they're looking for that level of assistance in drafting a response. The response could involve not only the merits of the grievance, but potential, you know, timeliness arguments, if it's filed inappropriately or late, if they're not filing it in the right form, let's say if the employee has civil service rights, and they should be filing an appeal to the Civil Service Commission. And then from there, there would be a tracking or, you know, contact with the point of contact on a going-forward basis, as that grievance progresses through the steps of the grievance procedure, to the point where if there was an arbitration demand filed, we would then, you know, assist the town in selecting an arbitrator, and then if the town so desired, you know, representing them, you know, at that specific arbitration, and drafting a brief, and things such as that. So it would be from, you know, start to finish, again, but also based on, you know, the client's request and their needs.
Okay. Thank you.
John?
Please-
Please discuss your approach in advising the town manager and select board with collective bargaining.
Well, when it comes to collective bargaining, I mean, there are obviously, you know, quite a few, you know, interests at play. Because you have multiple collective bargaining groups. You have multiple, you know, individuals that you're going to have to be sitting down negotiating with. And so that's a lot of balls in the air, so to speak. Generally, the first step would be to meet with the town manager or the board in executive session to develop a strategy with respect to negotiations. What are you looking for to extract out of these next three years of labor relations with your employer, with your employees? And it's important to, from my perspective, understand that it's labor relations. This circumstance where you have to work with these people, you have to see them continually on a, on a day-to-day basis. So there's a need to work together to try to get something done in a collaborative fashion. But the first step would be to meet with the board and the town manager in executive session, develop a strategy for negotiations. If it's a circumstance where we would be serving as lead spokesperson, we would then develop, I think, proposals that would be advanced at the initial collective bargaining sessions. And then from there, you know, you would engage in that collective bargaining process. I would, I would hope that I would be in a position where I would be able to communicate regularly with the board for purposes of advising them as to where negotiations are, what the unions have proposed, what our thoughts are with respect to those proposals, what potential exposures you have, what they're looking for and what, you know, what the town's proposing, what the union is willing to accept. Really, it's a collaborative process. It's a team approach. There could be circumstances where we would be just in the background advising a town if that's what they're looking for and that's what their, that's what their desire is. So it could be, you know, from that standpoint as well. But really, the primary intent behind all of it or the primary objective would be, I think, to keep the client informed as much as we possibly could for purposes of their being able to determine what the next steps would be. Because at the end of the day, if you don't have an agreement, you have potential, you know, labor relations issues. You have potential arbitrations at the JOMC with your public safety groups, mediation at the DLR with your non-public safety groups. And that can lead to a, you know, a difficult relationship in town that we, you know, strive to avoid, you know, really with all the negotiations we participate in. Thank you.
Can I just get a quick follow-up?
Yep.
So I'm wondering, obviously, you guys provide services to a number of communities. Can you give us a brief overview of what you typically see in terms of who's kind of at the table representing the town in terms of that bargaining process?
Sure. I mean, every town is different. I'll just give you an example. Let's say we're dealing with a fire union. Normally, you would have the fire chief at the bargaining table. But in certain circumstances, the fire chief may want to be away from the table to avoid that potential, you know, conflict and feelings of ill will within the fire station on a day-to-day basis. There could be a board member who sits at the table and represents or is a representative of the board of selectmen. You could have an HR director, town manager, a town administrator. Town council could be a part of the bargaining team. You could have a finance director part of the bargaining team. It really, you know, depends on the specific needs and wants of that town. But, I mean, it varies from town to town. But normally, you'll see a department head and a town manager primarily at the bargaining table.
And some charters actually address who has to be part of the team versus who may be part of the team.
So the next question, I think, that many of us are familiar with here at this table. But discuss your approach in advising and reviewing and drafting town meeting warrants as well as dealing with legal questions that may occur relative to those articles at town meeting.
I'll take that. I think I've been the most of that over these last several years. Starting, what's the basic goal behind the article? Some things are very straightforward by themselves. I always try to discuss anything that looks beyond simply straightforward. So anything that might not be apparent to even an informed reader, I can learn about. And if there are any particular side issues that result as a consequence of that so that one can be prepared for either a particular question that might arise at town meeting or something else that you may want to include in the article itself as either necessary or perhaps appropriate when you go to take the vote so that you're not boxed out and/or you're prepared to take action within a broader range so that you don't have to have another town meeting to finish the exercise, if you will. So, we, I think, all know from experience that you can never predict exactly what's going to happen on any particular article. But as much communication as is possible, that's my philosophy. Because the more you talk about something, the more you might realize, oh, I understand this, but does the other person even know about this, even though it seems second nature to me?
Thank you.
Okay. Could you explain your experience at the appellate tax board and the results? And what type of cases they were?
I'm not sure either or any of us here has personal experience at the appellate tax board, at least not I in the last, I'll say, 20 years. Attorney Tom McInney does a lot of our ATB work. He has worked on some cases for Groton as well. I would say a lot of cases at the ATB tend to be about relatively small amounts in dispute. So that to the extent a resolution can be reached that's not going to prejudice the town as assessor, tax collector in the future, we would work collaboratively to that end. Now, occasionally, you will get much larger dollar value where it's not so either expedient or necessarily in your long-range interest to look at just resolving it simply. You may know, for example, that some cases that are not of very high value, communities don't even bring counsel to the ATB hearings. They're represented by their assessor quite often. And it's always our view that if we don't think you need us to do something, we're not going to force ourselves into a situation or force ourselves onto a matter. And I think, again, keying from the phrase that we have been using this evening, if you have a need or a desire for us to provide a certain level of assistance, that's what we will do. We will also tell you if we think this is as much as you should do or reasonably ask us to do just from a cost basis. And then it's always your decision about whether you want to go further.
Thank you.
Should you become aware, this is a theoretical question here. Should you become aware of an department head, a member of a board, or a member of a committee, they're about to do something ill-advised against the, against the advice of counsel, what action do you guys take?
Or an entire board or committee.
Okay. I'll allow that.
Sure. It would depend on the circumstances of who is involved. But certainly, we would give notice. And it may be noticed to an administrator or a manager, depending on what's the circle of people who are involved. But it may also be noticed simultaneously or separately to the select board or board of selectmen. We would not want to either condone, participate in, or let go unnoticed from our perspective, that kind of activity if we were aware of it. And we would also want to be looking at, to the extent we had time, and in that situation, we may well not, if there are any particular charter or even bylaw requirements about who would need to be informed of an issue of that nature. But notification, obviously.
Yeah, I can give a couple, just two examples, not Groton, that, you know, where something like that happened. You know, one, sitting at a meeting and having a quorum of a board come in before the new open meeting law come up and want to participate like this in a meeting of another board, which in the previous version of the open meeting law would have been an automatic violation just having them show up. So, you know, at that point, you're at a meeting, what do you do? And as counsel, you know, you do have an opportunity to say, you know, if, to the chairman, could you please give us a minute? You know, can we have a five-minute recess? And go to talk to the members of that board and say, actually, you can't have all three of you here. If one of you were to leave, then we're less than a quorum and that would be okay. So we do that also. For example, at a town meeting, if the moderator reads out the wrong quantum of vote or fails to announce a quantum that's required. So let's just say a two-thirds vote is required and they said something like, okay, that passes, which wouldn't be enough for the record to be able to stand up and say, you know, Mr. Moderator or Madam Moderator, that requires a two-thirds vote, you'll need to declare it as such. So, you know, we really take our responsibility very seriously. On the other hand, an ill-advised decision is something, if it's a policy decision, our role would be a little bit different. And at that point, we would point out, here are the risks, here are the benefits. And typically, that would, we would try not to do that in any manner that would embarrass anyone. You know, our job is to make you look good and accomplish what you want to accomplish. So if there were time that allowed for it, we would, you know, take the chair aside and say, look, here are some risks, or we talk to the manager and explain why that decision might be problematic, why it might be difficult to defend, why it could create issues for the town. So, and we do this on a very regular basis. At the same time, we don't, as David said, kind of force ourselves onto things. And so, you know, a board may make an ill-advised decision that they want to make and they don't care what counsel says. And counsel isn't the police. And so we don't get to say, halt, this is illegal, you may not take this action, unless there's something really, you know, significant that would require. So, and, and again, we, we really see ourselves as working at your direction. Our job is to provide you with information. And then certainly, we don't want to see any board or committee or any individual do something illegal. It happens with conflict of interest law issues as well. You know, someone might say, hey, what do you think about this? And we might say, well, we are going to talk to the individual, have them have the opportunity to ask questions and then let them try and resolve it on their own versus embarrass someone at a meeting by saying, yes, we think that's an absolute conflict and you should leave the meeting. So we really try to help the town, help boards and committees and individuals. But, you know, we're here to protect the town and its interests, not to harm the town and its interests.
All right. So I have the next question again, and we're turning to land use and zoning. Have you guys been retained in the past to conduct a comprehensive review of local zoning bylaws for codification to improve clarity, to remove contradiction, redundancy? And then have you kind of executed a similar review of all town bylaws or policies?
Yes. The answer to both those questions is yes. We do comprehensive zoning review, we do comprehensive general bylaw review, we do comprehensive charter review. And we do it on a regular basis.
Is that part of retainer?
Well, it would depend what kind of project it was. If it's, hey, can you look through these and just give us an idea about what could or couldn't be, you know, be updated, et cetera, that's one thing. There are some towns that will appropriate, you know, $100, $150,000, I'm not exaggerating, to do a comprehensive zoning bylaw review where they actually are analyzing the way the different bylaws work together, whether they're in the right order, whether they need to be changed to address particular issues. That, and, and using a planner and a consultant service, that obviously wouldn't be. But if it was, can you read through our bylaws and come meet with our bylaw review committee, which we did a while back, you know, we do that within the retainer.
From a labor standpoint, we're also very, you know, familiar with reviewing personnel policies and procedures that towns have. Generally, you know, you could see a circumstance where those are not updated or reviewed over an extended period of time. And those laws change rather frequently, just in the, you know, recent months with the Equal Pay Act signed, the pregnancy, anti-discrimination pregnancy statute that's been implemented on February 1st, 2019. There's the new OSHA standards that are being made applicable to cities and towns. So there, there is a occasion to review those policies and procedures and if that's something that, you know, a town desires, or desirous of having us do, we're familiar with that too.
Great. Thank you.
Have you been involved representing municipalities during a court appeal of local zoning requirements? I'm sure you have.
Yes.
If so, would you provide us with a non-Groton example, please?
Well, often, we have enforcement side issues and then we'll have just defense side issues. And I think, in a way, there's a pretty good intersection of what we would be doing. And that is, first of all, what does the bylaw say? What is it that the particular board and any other town stakeholder who has an interest is looking to accomplish? And how can we best achieve that? Now, when you have a challenge to a bylaw, this is sort of an automatic reaction of standing up here, gets up a little, simply because anytime the authority or the legislative action of a community is being challenged, that's in a form, an affront to the community. Sometimes, just to key off what Lauren said, there may be a provision in a bylaw that's been around for a long period of time and needs to be perhaps looked at with fresh eyes rather than just, you know, this is our bylaw, we're going to enforce it. I think the approach we take is best described by, how can we achieve within reason what are the community's goals? And how can we help you to understand what you might want those goals to be if there are questions that are open? We have had a challenge, I can think of a question of enforcement that involved whether zoning applied to a non-municipal but still public entity. And so then you have a question of relationship or comity between these two governmental units that are going to have to get along with each other after the dust settles. Contrast that with a situation where you may have a more aggressive and not well-intentioned at all challenge to a bylaw by a development proposal. And so to the extent that actions and provisions are defensible and that is going to be what is best in the interest of the client, we would defend that.
We see a lot of enforcement cases. You know, it also, kind of with the recession, a little bit more in the back window, we see a lot more cases where municipalities are choosing to enforce their zoning bylaws in ways that they hadn't previously. So signs, fentite, storage of cars in front yards, building of, of, there's been a lot of chicken issues and llamas and bunnies. And, you know, so storage of wildlife or tamed wildlife and where that is on a particular piece of property. So we see a lot, a lot of that, a lot of interest in that. Trucks idling has been a lot, a lot of focus on that, landscaping issues. We see a fair number of true neighbor disputes that are brought in the guise of zoning. And in those, especially, you know, a permit's issued, there's a challenge to that, we typically will look for ways to allow the per, the permutee to really defend the decision of the, of the town in that regard. And we've found that that saves the town a lot of money. And they're really the parties in interest. You know, the, the board or committee voted to approve a particular permit or a particular variance. Let, let the person who got that do, do the heavy lifting. And we monitor that and we keep the town apprised of what's going on with, with the case. But we aren't as actively involved. And then there's cases where, you know, where the town really is the mover. And in those cases, obviously, those are some of the cases that I mentioned earlier where we might say, here are the risks, here are the benefits, this could be expensive. But it's important, you know, that allowing that one property owner to have three cars in their front yard makes a huge, without license plates, makes a huge difference to a, you know, a number of people. And the decision is made, we're going to try, we're going to try and enforce it. So there's that. And, you know, we wind up, we have a very significant amount of land use litigation. Not everybody does litigation. I don't do as much litigation as others. David does litigation. We also have several litigators, land use litigators, that we call upon to provide support for those types of things as well. And we have a pretty good track record. We do, we do very well. The courts know us. Land Court in particular really knows us and I think has great respect for the work that we do. We also, you know, we litigate all the way up to the SJC. Even though I'm not a big litigator, I had a case before the SJC where I didn't get to argue, but I sat there. But, but we all, we really do. And I can't remember whether we included a list, we have kind of a sample list of successful litigation where... Yeah. So that's just, those are some examples. But as Brian is saying, you know, there's cases that we're involved with on a day-to-day basis. And so, you know, our database is a little bit behind. But it's, you know, if you have a particular interest in a particular kind of case, we certainly can get you some examples of that as well.
Thank you. Josh?
Sure. So how does your firm work to provide effective and efficient legal representation? And how do you work to manage costs? That's the first part of the question. And then, we know you folks offer a retainer, but please explain your retainer, what's included, what's excluded, and what the hourly rate is for what's excluded?
I will take from the previous question and use that litigation example in the first part of your question. I recently had a dispute that involved a property owner who was using the property for a non-residential commercial purpose. There were really only a few people who did not appreciate the side effects, because it was a large property, and there weren't that many events or activities that would spill out. But yet, it was clearly in violation, at least the town position of the bylaw. And there were some constituents, residents, who have as much right as anyone else to voice their objection, who were complaining. So, an enforcement action was brought. We were successful in getting essentially a permanent injunction against this activity. But as we progressed through the case, I made it a point to, on more than one occasion, confer with the client to say, we have an opponent who has essentially said to us, we'd be willing to discuss some alternative settlement arrangement here. Bringing those kinds of things to the client as you go through litigation is important, and not to get in a tunnel vision mode, because you can quickly, before you realize it, spend a lot of money, and conceivably jeopardize not only your position in the particular litigation, but perhaps your credibility or position in another lawsuit that's going on. So, revisiting, connecting, communication, as Brian has said. Same as with a labor matter. You want to know, what are your options? Do your options change? And you'd want to be aware of that, because you wouldn't want to be acting on stale information. We have currently an arrangement of a retainer service that has a cap at $30,000 per month with a $170 an hour rate. The proposal to you is $180 and a $35,000 annual cap for retainer services. Those services would not include litigation, or arbitration, or collective bargaining, or real estate transactions. There may be one other item, but that gives you the description of the kinds of things that would be separated out. As we talked about before, meetings periodically with boards, with individuals, that all is part of the retainer.
And I could just add, basically, anything that's adversarial in nature is excluded from the retainer. So, not attending one meeting, but representing the town in a comprehensive permit project, for example. And, and that's actually straight in our, it's page six, I have to back up so I can see it, page six of our proposal. And, you know, I want to also point out, a retainer is a little bit different than what we offer the town, and we have different arrangements with different towns. This is an arrangement that's been in place a long time. A retainer is like, you take the year's amount, and you divide it by 12, and you bill it every month. But we, we don't do that with the town. We have a cap on general municipal services. So, it means you pay for what you pay for, and you see it on the bill every month, broken out, as what we've actually done with the dollar amount next to it. And then, we will not bill you more for general municipal services than 35, as proposed, than $35,000 in the year. So, if one month, you don't spend that much, you're not going to pay for that. If a different month, you pay, you spend a little more, you'll pay a little more. But if you get to the $35,000, that's it for general municipal work. So, that really works directly to your benefit, because it means that you can use us how you want us. If you use us a ton, and it would exceed the $35,000, that's your prerogative, you get to do that. And, you know, that's, that's a chance that we're willing to take. You know, sometimes people say to us, oh, do you do pro bono work? And I say, well, we work at a rate that is intended to benefit municipalities on a regular basis. So, we have rates that are meant to pass along to you, kind of the shared expense of, of what we're doing on behalf of municipalities. So, we absorb the costs of the, you know, the e-updates and the, the trainings and all of that, because it matters to us that you guys are able to access good quality or excellent quality legal services. And I think, you know, I think when you look at the rate, that 170, that's been in place for a very long time, because we really tried to help municipalities ride out the recession without imposing higher legal costs. And right now, we're starting to say, okay, well, you know, people are in a better place. And that's not to suggest that municipalities feel like they're flush, because we know that is absolutely not the case. Everybody is still budgeting very leanly as they must, and the state still hasn't increased state aid, and we completely understand that. But, you know, the quality of what we provide is really exceptional, and it's completely separate from what the cost might be. And that's something that we, you know, we sit at tables with attorneys who are very high-powered attorneys on the other side of things, and they're being paid 600, $800 an hour, we're being paid our municipal rate. And there's a reason for that, because that's important to us, that you're able to use our services, and that, as David said, we get to do very interesting, very important work, and that's the trade-off that we make. So, the, the way the, the retainer here set up is actually a cap. And so, so there's that. And then, the things that are outside of that are things that are very significant. So, either, as we said, adversarial proceedings, or what's listed here is a comprehensive permit process, which is very intensive, and, you know, meetings week after week after week, an entire recodification of bylaws. So, not just, do you mind looking at this and giving us some feedback, but, you know, really going through every single one, sitting down, coming back week after week. And essentially, these are things that municipalities would typically have a separate appropriation for, a separate budget for. And that's really how we kind of came up with that list of what's general municipal legal services versus, you know, hourly rate legal services.
So, if we don't use $35,000 worth of your services in a year, we don't pay them?
No.
We only pay what we use?
Yes.
That's 100% correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's my last question.
Becky, yes.
Yeah, but I have another, specific question that maybe is more important than this.
Okay.
And I guess I just really want to ask you, we had a situation where we got advice from you, and then we were charged with an open meeting law violation, and the attorney general supported, not us. I guess I wonder what you guys have thought about that after it happened?
I'll add to that, I was the person who gave the advice. I still think the advice was appropriate. I don't want to say too much, because it's a matter between attorney and client to some extent, and not necessarily all public. It's not the first time that we would have had a disagreement with a state agency. When we are asked for advice with respect to, for example, open meeting or public records, which tend to be the things that people touch the most, either as an employee on a day-to-day basis, or a municipal-appointed official, we will look to what the law says. And anytime we're asked for advice, we will look to what does the client want to accomplish, and is there an ability, in our opinion, to accomplish something within the realm of the law? And we will advise accordingly. If we come to a conclusion that we believe there's something that you want to do that can't be done within the scope of the law, we would tell you that.
And without any reference to the particulars of this issue, I will say, in part of our, our challenge, where we represent a number of cities and towns, and we are interacting with the state on a regular basis on behalf of those clients, is to advise in the context of new laws with new interpretations. And I will say, and I think David mentioned this, there are many, many circumstances where we disagree with the attorney general's office, or the secretary of state's office on public records issues, or any conflict of interest issues with the state ethics commission. Our job is to give you the best advice that we can. There are times they don't agree with us, just like there are times we don't agree with them. I will say, and especially in, in the context I just mentioned, not much the, the state ethics commission, but over time, those interpretations change from the state. And we have seen things that, you know, like in this case perhaps, where the attorney general will say one thing, and a couple years down the line, they take a different position. You know, partly, it's who's doing the interpretation, and partly, it's an experience issue. I think there are, when, when the attorney general sees similar things over and over, it might shift them a little bit. And one example I can give you is the way that, and I think we actually have talked about this, the public record status of resumes. The attorney general took a very particular position about that, and then, over time, their, their opinions on it changed. Town meeting, the, the, previously, the district, different district attorneys required every single board or committee that wanted to meet at town meeting to post, and now this attorney general has said something that's slightly different than that. So, you know, we, we definitely think it's unfortunate when something like that happens. It's very frustrating for us, as I'm sure you might imagine. But, you know, if that same issue were to come up again, I'm confident David would have given the same advice. And going forward, you know, if that were to happen in another town with the same exact facts, we would give the same advice, and we would say, just, you should know, this is what the attorney general said in that case. So, you never want to be the case where, where the attorney general says that you did something that's inconsistent. But again, you did it with advice of council, there wasn't any intent to violate the law, and that's important. You know, it's better to ask and get the advice than to kind of do something that you think is going to be compliant, and then have it not be. So, you guys did everything that you could have done, right? And we did the best that we could with, with what we know about what the AG has said and would say.
Thank you.
Allison, did you have a follow-up on that?
No, I was interested in kind of sliding our last question in there.
Well, that is my last question, to be honest. Becky asked the intent of that question, so, just in a more specific way than I was intending.
Okay.
So, do you want to rephrase, in a different manner?
No.
Okay. Anybody else have anything else? It's, we're at nine.
Can I, can I just ask one follow-up to Becky's question? To David, if that's all right? When the, you get an appeal in an open meeting law, and it goes off to the attorney general, doesn't the attorney general usually contact town council to discuss that before issuing an opinion?
I don't believe I've ever had an incident where that didn't happen, but it did not happen here.
So, it didn't happen? You weren't contacted to discuss why you offered the opinion?
That's correct.
Okay. I'm sorry, just wanted to-
So, what you're saying is normally they will contact?
Yes. Always been my experience, did not happen in this particular case.
Okay. All right. I think we're, we're all set, and we're going to adjourn in a moment. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for having us.
Very much. Thank you.
He doesn't say that there.
The wires are problematic.
Thank you so much. Thank you for coming out.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren.
Thank you.
So nice to meet you. Thank you to see you again. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thanks.
Thanks, Dave.
Bye-bye.
So, just one housekeeping item before we go. I plan to put this on next week's agenda, unless there's any objections to putting this selection on next week's agenda.
I will, I will be remotely participating next week.
So, we have two remotes. So, let's, there's no challenge.
You'll put this on the-
Yeah, let's not put this on a two-remote agenda. We already have a forum.
Are you not going to be here too?
I didn't say that.
Oh, I'm just getting nervous.
He's, he's going to be gone after that.
I was just going to say, I'm ready to make the decision.
All right, I'm not.
Okay.
And I appreciate that. I think it's a little more difficult than I expected it to be. But, so, what's the board's preference? Would you guys-
You'll find out when-
Allison and Becky, would you be okay with being remote, making a decision on the 20, I'm sorry, the 24th?
23rd.
23rd, excuse me. Or would you prefer that we wait till August?
I mean, for me-
Fifth, right?
Conceptually.
August, is it the-
It couldn't be the 2nd.
Six, six.
August 6th, excuse me.
August 6th.
Help me out, look at the calendar.
So, for me, I mean, conceptually, I have no issue with it. I think the logistics of having one person remote is difficult. I don't conceive how two people remotely-
Yeah, why do you push B for five, why don't you push B for nine?
Right. I know that the cell phone reception is tricky where I will be.
Could we meet just for the purposes of taking the vote and have no other agenda items on the following Monday?
So, you're talking instead of, you're talking August?
July 30th.
July 30th.
July 30th. I do not have an issue with meeting in July 30th.
Just one item, though, sir, if you don't mind.
Do it at 6 o'clock, then make it in and out of here.
No, it'll be at 7 o'clock, but yes.
I tried.
I don't have it, I think-
You are consistent, I must say.
So, yeah, I-
It's summer.
I appreciate that, that request. Does that work for everybody for the 30th?
Yes.
So much for our every other, we have not had a week off since you went to your every other week.
It might be the quickest meeting, or it might not be.
All right. So, it's at 7 o'clock.
So, 7 o'clock on July 30th, we will have a meeting to decide, discuss and decide on, and take a vote on the next, on the town council, the town of Groton for the next fiscal year.
Is there sufficient other agenda demand to have a meeting next week?
Well, what I would say to do, why don't you just not meet next Monday, and meet the 30th, since both of you two will be back that day.
What's on next Monday?
A lot was all right.
Well, there's, there's things to buy, policies that you guys are going to take up. There's nothing that's pressing that can't wait until the-
Mostly mandatory.
Yeah. There's nothing that can't wait until the 30th, so why don't you not meet next week?
It's always going to be hard to do remotely.
Are there any liquor requests, any, any liquor license requests? Excuse me.
I have-
I would like an 18-year-old single malt.
Yes. All right, there will not be-
I'll go over the agenda, the items with you on Wednesday, and then talk. Why don't we plan on just having your regular meeting on the 30th?
Works for me.
Right, so that'll be our chance.
By the way, Allison, Allison, Becky, right at town.
I get it.
Why me?
I get it.
I think that's more reasonable for this. And then, we'll start at 7 o'clock on 30th, and we'll just, we'll parlay our meeting, but the, the town council will be the first item on the agenda.
And cancel the 23rd.
And cancel the 23rd, yes. I agree with that. Everybody okay with that?
Good.
All right, thank you.
I have a procedural question. If, in thinking about these three firms, can we, as an individual, call and ask a follow-up question with anybody?
I don't see why you couldn't. I don't think there's any protocol in my to stop you from doing that. Can we contact the firm that we interviewed, and ask a follow-up question?
Yeah.
As long as you share the results of that with the rest of the-
And then, send to you the information that is received.
And that's shared to the rest of the board. I think that's important, that the rest of the board know what's being asked.
Providing it's a question and not an opinion, I would be okay with that, because unfortunately, we're not in a public forum, and we have to be very careful. If it's a fact finding issue in response to a question, that's okay.
Right. And I, I actually-
In fact, we might have to reveal those questions that were asked.
That's why I just said, as long as it's revealed in public afterwards. But if, if Becky says, you know, does you retain a cover A, B, C, D, and E, that's your question.
And I think-
And he answers back, no, it doesn't. That's not an opinion, that's a question. Pass that on to the board.
And to me, that's a fairly logistical question. As an individual, I'm pretty uncomfortable with the idea of individuals calling, because I think you never, at, at the board level, we've seen issues where the tenor and tone of a conversation can be so important, and that's not something that can be captured and relayed back to the group.
I don't, I'm not asking this because I anticipate the need, it's just a part to meet.
How about if those things were not called, but were emails? That way, we-
That's fine.
We did that the last time, actually. We sent follow-up questions. I believe, Josh, we emailed them a couple of follow-ups.
If those questions were given to the town manager, the town manager would go and answer, and share it with-
That's fine, that's fine, yeah.
Would that be a lot?
That'd be a lot cleaner.
Okay, so, so-
Let's try to be as clean as possible.
Put it in it. Try to reduce it to an email and have you ask. Sure.
We did that the last time, I believe, Josh.
I don't remember, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and that sounds reasonable to me as well, so I think everybody's at that.
And then, just one other logistical question. These conversations are not in executive session, correct?
No.
That's correct.
Everything is public, unless you're going to talk about a specific case that we're under litigation on, which, I didn't hear any of that come up tonight.
So, I have a question of, before that, before the 30th, could you send us information about how much we have paid KP per year over the last-
Yes, I could.
That's pretty easy.
Yeah, we did that, we did that analysis. As a matter of fact, we, we did an analysis, and I could do it again if the board wants me to do it, which, we take the hourly rates proposed from the firm versus what we paid- me to do it, which we take the hourly rates proposed from the firm versus what we paid and what the cost would have been under the same circumstances. So for example, KP had a max of $30,000 with a retainer with an hourly rate of $170. So we paid $60,000 in legal fees on, you know, fiscal year '18. Okay, well, what would that have been if we applied the 6,500, say the Talaman rate versus the Duressis rate?
Right.
And that showed a comparison. And I think that is very helpful information. I think I did it for two fiscal years, Josh. Barry, were you on the board at the time?
No, just prior to me, it was coming on.
I believe I did it for two prior years.
That would be, I think, hugely useful.
Yeah, it was very useful the last time.
And while that could certainly be useful information, at the end of the day, you get what you pay for.
Understood.
Yeah, some factors aren't financial, but it always goes, you know, we do have fiduciary Some factors aren't financial, but it always goes, you know, we do have fiduciary responsibility, responsibility, so it'd be good to know those financial matters. so it'd be good to know those financial matters.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely.
Keep in mind, your fiscal year, it is important because depending on what decision And keep in mind, your fiscal year, it is important because depending on what decision you make, may require a town meeting appropriation in the fall. you make, may require a town meeting appropriation in the fall.
That's right. That's right.
Because we appropriated $70,000 for legal fees in '19. Because we appropriated $70,000 for legal fees in '19. I want to make that very clear as well. I want to make that very clear as well.
Can we get a copy of any- Can we get a copy of any- With the information you might be able to provide us, we will be able to put it into the perspective of what's been budgeted for and what these are apt to come out at.
Can we get a copy of or a link to via email, any policy charter, anything that impacts or outlines kind of the board's expectations of council or of our or your or other committees interacting with council?
I don't think we have any written, Allison.
That's what I'm wondering, I don't-
The only thing we have is the board's policy on access to legal services.
Yeah, there's nothing else.
That's wrong.
Yeah.
The board doesn't have a policy on council.
So the e updates that they are sending?
I get them all the time. You guys should be on that email list.
How are we supposed, are we supposed to be getting them through correspondence or is this coming to directly to us?
I get them by town of Groton email.
Yeah, they're supposed to go to your town of Groton email address.
I don't think so.
And I have been for-
That's why I'm surprised, John, you didn't get anything.
Nothing.
Yeah.
My town of email-
Well, I wasn't on the town, I didn't have a town mail account.
That might be the problem.
Allison did and I didn't.
But I don't get anything now.
You don't get anything now.
No, I'm not getting-
We're going to update the list.
Sorry, I'm not getting anything now.
The reason I'm not using my town of Groton email address is nothing gets forwarded from that address. And you know how many times over the last 10 years I've said that? It doesn't forward through to my personal email address. And if it did, I'd use it all the time.
Yeah, we got to fix that because you're the only one that doesn't use it. Are you having any problems?
The reason I don't use it.
Do you get e updates?
Yeah, you have any problems? You tell them.
Well, none of us are. It's just bad.
But that's not a forwarding issue.
Barry is the only-
But I don't know how to use email.
Barry is the only person on this board who's getting e updates.
All right, there's a problem, there's a problem, maybe it's, you know something?
I asked this town of Groton through, I looked at my phone.
This could be my problem not updating, you know, people to, because I get it. I get the, I get the e updates all the time.
Soon you've got it too. Next time, never got anything.
Next time I get an update, I'll send it out and make sure everybody got the same. If not, we'll check your spam folder, we'll check where it might have gone.
No, I don't think we're getting it, Barry.
Okay.
I don't think it's going to spam. I think it's not coming.
This could be my problem. I could have not notified them properly. I think I did, but I'll have to go back and, I'll take responsibility. Now, planning board is not my responsibility, but this board is, so I got to figure that out.
Responsibility is planning board.
It's probably my responsibility.
Exactly. If people could handle it together.
What was the answer to my question?
Takashi.
No, probably, it's probably me, it's probably my responsibility.
Well, if it's Takashi, doesn't even know it's responsible.
Mr. Chair, where are we at in this meeting, sir?
We could be a chair.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody. Barry, thank you for dinner.